Who is present this evening and online to the February 13th meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals. My name is Jeff Carson, be serving as Chair of tonight's meeting. Make a few introductions before we get started. Byron Toy with the Department of Planning and Urban Design is with us tonight along with James Malloy with the Department of Urban Design and Planning. We also have Janet Parker with the planning staff along with the following commissioners present here this evening. Commissioner Brandy Armstrong, Commissioner Duane Beth, Commissioner Jake Miller, Commissioner Joseph Strauss, and Commissioner Aaron Ward. With that, I will now turn the meeting over to, oh, I'm sorry, and Commissioner James Connolly has joined us. I will now turn the meeting over to Secretary Parker, who will read the opening statement and explain how we will run tonight's meeting.
Mr. Chairman, before I read the statement, I do have an application that's being pulled from the Board of Zoning Appeals Agenda and will not be heard tonight. That is BOZA 2022-077 Chad Shimicki for property at 13700. If anyone is here for that, and also the corresponding change of zone COZ 2022-045, Master Plan Amendment MPL 2022-026, and Platte 2023-001. Those four applications are being pulled by staff. They, and they will be held over till the March 13, 2023 Agenda due to some statutory notification issues that occurred.
Thank you.
Okay. "We would like to welcome those participating by telephone, Zoom, or in the commission chamber to the meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Members of the Board of Zoning Appeals are participating remotely by Zoom or are present in the commission chamber, and Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background and plan to stay visible during the meeting. Board members use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak, and after Chairman Carson recognizes you, please unmute your microphone and state your name when you begin to speak. If you are in the commission chamber, please state your name before speaking once Commissioner, I'm sorry, once Chairman Carson recognizes you. For those members of the public attending the meeting virtually this evening, please use the raise your hand feature if you want to speak on an application. If you are present in the commission chamber, please come to the microphone at the front of the room when the application is called. After the chairman recognizes you, please state your name and address and make your comments. If you are having issues getting in the Zoom meeting, please email planninginfo@yco-kck.org and let Secretary Parker know. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting, and anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs, which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The format for this evening's meeting as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining the proposal. The applicant will be given 15 minutes to present their case, which includes the applicant, consultants, and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the board will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be recognized and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be recognized to make their statements and ask questions, with each member of the public being given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker's time may be extended in five-minute intervals by a two-third majority vote of the board. The chairman will ask for a show of hands of people who are in support or opposition that did not speak. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed, and the public will only be allowed to address the board if a question is directed to them. The staff will make their recommendation. The board will discuss the application and make their decision with a brief statement of the reason for the motion preceding the making of the motion. Motions to approve shall include the staff stipulations unless otherwise stated in the motion. Mr. Chairman, our first application tonight is BOZA 2022-060. Roger Barrett with SK Design Group for property at 810 North Sixth Street. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Mr. Chairman, if, yes, you will recall, this application was held over from last month's meeting, so that testimony is all part of the record, and it was held over regarding the parking issue.
All right, thank you, Janet. You still need to move me over. I'm unable to work with any of the attendees.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Barrett has his hand raised. Are you not able to?
No.
Let me double-check something here. Okay. Let's try this.
Yep, there we go.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. I've got you queued up to speak. Go ahead and please give us your name and address and tell us about your project.
Good evening, everybody. This is Roger Barrett with SK Design Group. Our offices are at 4600 College Boulevard, Suite 100 in Overland Park, Kansas, representing Eagle Point Companies for the City Hall Place Development. Thank you very much, everybody, for working so hard. It's been a joint effort between the Unified Government and Eagle Point Companies to get affordable housing in this specific location that is desired by both Unified Government and Eagle Point Companies. We'd like to thank specifically all the hard work that's been done by John Kelly, Gunner Hand, and Byron Toy that's owned this meeting as well. Without their help and leadership, we wouldn't be able to have gotten the parking issues and the development ready to be approved tonight for the variants. We have worked closely with staff and are, have filed our joint parking agreement with the City Hall Place, which is owned and operated by Eagle Point Companies along with this particular, that's right, where the hand is, is the parking lot that's there. So it's owned by the same entity, and we filed that document that was requested by Byron, I believe, to coordinate all that issues, and he can bring more light to that if there are any questions. But that parking lot will also serve this development as well. We also are going to have 20 parking stalls available to this development in Lot 6, where the cursor is being moved right now, and that is in your packet as well. We have walking distances to multiple parking lots within this part of the downtown area to give everybody an idea of how far that is, and working closely with, with, with the planning staff that, that everyone is in agreement that, that we have solved the parking issues, that, that the number of parking stalls is, that was in the ordinance was, was a little excessive for this type of development. This is for low-income housing, and the availability and the, and the, and the cost of owning an automobile has, has been prohibitive. Not everyone can afford a car, but, but a lot of people need transportation, and that's why the Unified Government and and Eagle Point Companies have worked together at this location at Sixth and Anne, where there's good public transportation, which is exactly what the master plan and the, is, is, has identified for this portion of the downtown area. So I'll be happy to answer any questions anyone has, and I'll leave it to whoever has any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant from the commission members?
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I remember pretty much all things from last meeting, but I just want to find out, so there's, are 14 spaces on, is that what we're saying, 14 spaces on site? That's it?
Correct.
And then you're going to spread them out between two other parking garages that are considerable ways away from the, from the building itself?
There are other public parking areas, both on streets and in parking lots within, you know, 2, 3, 4, 5, 600-foot areas. So it's a very dynamic parking area, and it was the the desire of the Unified Government as well as this developer not to keep building parking garages and parking lots, but to provide for affordable housing and, and understanding that, that even the, the City Hall lofts that were, which is the development of Eagle Point Companies there to our east of this development. I think they have 40-some-odd units in there, and only 14 stalls are being utilized. So it gives you an idea of that, that not everybody at this demographic and for this housing element can afford a car.
Okay, I'm sorry, but so, so the, I guess my thing is, is the distance away that this is going to be, I mean, it's still a safety issue, wouldn't you agree?
No, we've worked with, with John Kelly, and like I said, and Gunner, and Byron, and, and staff. And Unified Government agrees that the distance from the parking lot to this development is not an issue.
I fail to see how that's not an issue. That's a long ways away, and obviously, we know crime is higher downtown in this area, so I don't, I'm not falling that. I don't agree with that at all. That's, that's not a correct statement.
We understand that you have that opinion. Thank you.
I want to go to Commissioner Connolly, then Commissioner Beth. Commissioner Connolly?
Yeah. I do think there is something in the ordinance that says it can't be more than 200 feet from the establishment. And also, we asked for parking agreements. It seemed like you presenting the same stuff that you had presented before. Eagle Point, even for the property that they're in now, is short of parking. And so I don't, I don't understand what has been, what have y'all done differently? One, did you get a signed agreement to use that parking lot? That's my first question. Can you answer that?
Yes, sir, we did. We, we have filed it, and Byron has a copy of that, and it has been recorded, so that that parking garage is now in perpetuity, a joint garage for both developments, and they're the same owner.
Yeah, but that parking garage was already short. It, it has a variance for, for its parking based off.
No, the current parking, I think, is, you know, Neil can, can chime in and.
Please, Neil.
Excuse me?
Yeah, I said.
Let me get Neil Martel queued up to speak. Go ahead, Mr. Martel. Mr. Martel?
Yes, all right, good evening. Neil Martel, Eagle Point Companies. Our offices located at 125 John Roberts Road in Portland, Maine. So Commissioner Connolly, the, just to clarify, the current City Hall Ops building is 43, sorry, 42 units. The parking garage that is adjacent to it, which is the old city, the police parking, is 60, currently 60 parking spots. So we have an excess at the, at the moment. Of that, only 14 are being used. It's historically been underutilized by our residents. And to further clarify, the, the lot that we are proposing to build on is actually owned by the current partnership. What we're doing is just proposing to add additional units there. It is, I guess, you know, literally across the street, it's 400 and, just over 400 feet. So the proposal is, or the, the variance is 200 feet. We're seeking an additional variance as part of this meeting this evening to exceed that 200 feet and to go to 400 feet on one, and I believe the city lot that they agreed to give, share parking spaces is 499 feet. So we are, we are, yes, a bit further than what the ordinance is, but within, it's a block and a half.
So there will be no one living in those apartments that have mobility issues?
There's also 14 spaces on site there with designated ADA parking.
Okay. All right, so our issue is that parking is already kind of crowded for different things during the day. Now, originally, I remember y'all said that the city was going to let y'all use the lot, or y'all had talked to the city. What was the determination on that lot?
Sure, so we, we've had many conversations. There are a handful of lots to the, I'm going to say the south and the east of our, of our proposed site. Some of those sites are, some of those lots are free to use during the day, and some of those lots are free to use in the evening. In consultation with our folks at the, at the UG, they agreed that Lot 6 was the appropriate lot. That's, that's the one that they, you know, we've asked for, for a closer lot. We've asked for the lot that they deemed to be suitable, and this is, this is, you know, the city's proposal back to us as to what they deem to be acceptable. You know, I mean, we, we would love to have it closer, no doubt, but this is, this is, you know, this is affordable housing in an, in an urban setting. And, you know, and we're, if, if the city wants, you know, if they want to have this, they have to agree that, you know, it's not going to fit perfectly. This isn't, this isn't a, you know, you're never going to find a perfect spot for affordable housing, and so there, there needs to be some, you know, changes in the rules or, or variances such to allow, to allow this to happen.
Okay, I guess, so you, I, I mean, I've heard this twice, someone from the UG. Could, could you give me that person's name?
Yeah, so we were speaking with Jeff, Jeff Fisher, John Kelly, and Rhonda Green. And Patrick Waters, who I believe is with the UG's legal department, is the one who provided the agreement.
Okay.
You good, Commissioner Connolly?
Well, I'm just, I'm still trying to, I mean, it doesn't seem like they come up with anything different than what they had said before.
We might get some clarification from staff in a minute, though, also.
Okay, all right, go ahead, then. I'm finished.
Thank you, Commissioner Beth.
Yeah, you may have answered this already in there somewhere, but what's the distance from, from the complex to the parking?
Exactly. 499 feet. It's the, it's the light bluish-green line to Lot 6 up there, where, where Janet is showing her Byron, I guess, whoever's running the cursor. Is, yeah, that's, that's Lot 6, and that's where John Kelly and the Unified Government staff designated that lot, and they did not have any problem with the, with only 20 stalls being there in addition to our parking garage and the walking distance. So these, these were all discussions that we have had with staff.
Is there a follow-up, Commissioner Beth?
Not right now.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request, please raise your hand or come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to staff, get their comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So to answer your original question, Mr. Connolly, the code does require that you have parking within 200 feet off-street, off-street, within 200 feet of the property, and they could not get parking within 200 feet because there's no parking available. There's no parking lot physically. Lot E to the south, the UG Building, excuse me, the UG Building Logistics not want to give up that parking because there's other users, users that use that parking. And so Lot 6, which is northeast of the page, which is the light blue, the Building Logistics thought that was the best place for that, for a UG lot. That was not being utilized, really. The Merck has some parking up along their building, but really, the Fire Department parks there, and that's really it. And the City Hall Place, they actually have, that's theirs, there are 17 spaces available. So this went from 60 spaces that were needed for, for a variance down to nine, because there's 17 parking spaces within the garage and 20 spaces within the UG lot. So that's 37 spaces total that are off-street. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Connolly, question?
Yes, I guess, I mean, so they need an average to go past the 200 feet? Is that what you're saying, Byron?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and also, I guess, I just have an issue because most subsidized housing, or low-income housing, has a lot of people with disability and mobility problems issues, and having 14 dedicated things and also having some kind of shopping in a lower level, you think that's sufficient?
I mean, do you think that's sufficient? I mean, there's transit directly across the street. There's a bus stop right there. There's also the, the micro transit that can be used, and also there's the bus, the Transit Shelter Center, excuse me. That's some, that's at 17 minutes, so that can be used as well. But I do think that, you know, there is ADA parking in the lot itself that they're providing. But I do think that's going to be enough, yes.
So I guess my question is, so what would, I guess, people wanting to visit, where would they park?
Typically, they'd probably park on the street, honestly.
That street's, that street's pretty full, late at night.
Or they'll park, possibly park in Lot E, which is the south, which is people who go to the casino, park there. They may, they may park there, honestly.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Strauss.
I think that was going to be my point about Lot E, knowing that area extremely well. I'm not sure how you police Lot E from having the residents park there with the gate up at night versus parking a block and a half away. People are going to find the closest parking spot, and I think that the issue is going to turn into Lot E. I know this, the casino uses that lot, and I think that the people in this building are going to use that lot, and you're, you're going to see people in the morning. That lot's not going to be cleared out for UG usage. That's just my opinion. So I don't know how you police that, but I think that's going to be a problem you're going to run into in the future.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Connolly.
Well, I mean, I, I agree with what he just said. I mean, usually dealing with subsidized housing or low-income housing, these people normally don't work. So them parking there, they will be parked there during the day when UG needs that parking for staff. And I was thinking that they was going to come up with another reasonable thing to where to park. And I don't understand the agreement with the staff or them approving it when they know that, and because people go to court in different places during the day, now we're going to have these residents taking these parking spots because they're going to get there at night and never move. And now people that has to go to court won't have access, or they have to walk from a longer distance, and I don't think that that's reasonably right. And, you know, I kind of heard him make a statement that, you know, if UG can't allow them to use the parking, then they couldn't build. I, I mean, I don't know. This is a reasonable place for them to build anyway. So that's my statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Beth?
Yeah, Byron, can you answer, do, do we know right now what other developments are, are going on there? You know, there's talk about enhancing the convention center and the other stuff there on Sixth Street that, that may be used on this lot that we're giving up for them right now?
Right, so there's, like I said, there's 20 spaces allocated for this use. Now, if there was further development west, such as UMB Bank Tower, the UMB Bank Building, which is a separate parcel.
Correct.
That would be discussed with that group at that time related to their development. It wouldn't actually be predicated on what the UG has. Honestly, if the UG got rid of Lot 6 for some unforeseen reason, I don't see that happening, but if it did, then that would require this group here that, for you, to come back either for additional parking variance or actually for the parking variance, or go to Planning Commission for a parking agreement within a geographic boundary that they've found that's suitable for them.
But then we're in a position where we build it, and now we have to try to fix it. And that's what, what I'm, I'm trying to look at this as a long-term thing, because the actual goal of, of affordable housing is so people that can get a hand up instead of a handout, and so they may not forever not have a car. They're, they're, you know, they're, the people living there may, may be having more cars than we're anticipating. We're guessing right now people aren't going to have cars. And so we're, we're trying to project parking spaces that we're, we're not going to be needing right now, but may be overloaded in the future, and, and like was mentioned by some of the others, some of the people that do live in these affordable housings do have disabilities. It's going to prevent them from walking for 400, 500 feet to a, to a parking spot where, and during the day, sometimes those places are filled up down there. So we surrender Merck's parking spot, the conventions, parking lots, and those, those other ones. I don't think that's like a long-term vision, sorry.
Other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion when ready.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Yes.
I just wanted to add real quick. So in terms of other parking needs downtown, the Merck does have dedicated parking. That was part of the agreement when they came in. This does not affect their parking. I know that Building and Logistics and Parking Control took into account other future addition, you know, potential development, like you mentioned, and specifically limited the amount of parking that we would give to this developer in anticipation and making sure that we kept enough available additional parking. So I just wanted to kind of address that point, that the future, the current and future needs around that square block. I know that they did take that into account when determining how many spots they thought that we could afford to give up.
All right, thank you. For the record, that was Legal Counsel Patrick Waters. Other questions for staff or a motion?
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I'm with the Board of Zoning Appeals, deny case BOZA 2022-060. As I was, it's not in compliance with city ordinances, and obviously, with the distance away from the parking, from the building, I feel it to be a safety issue as well as a general welfare issue downtown.
All right, motion is made for denial by Commissioner Ward for reasons stated by the maker. Is that a second, Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any discussion on the motion for denial? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ward?
Hi.
Armstrong?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Connolly?
Aye.
Miller?
No.
Hmm. Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure, sure what that was.
That was a no.
Okay, thank you. Strauss?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to deny this appeal for the reasons stated by the maker passes five in favor and one opposed.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our next application is BOZA 2022-068. Scott Brewer with Grinner Chapel for property at 1020 South 78th Street. Does any member of the commission, I'm sorry, the board have any contact to disclose regarding this case?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Brewer, are you in the audience or online? If you are, please raise your hand or come to the podium if you're in the chambers. Scott Brewer. Okay, I've got Patricia Reader. Are you representing the applicant in this case?
Yes, I am.
All right, go ahead, please. Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Patricia Reader.
My name is Patricia Reader. I'm counsel, or my address is 5611 Southwest Barrington Court, South Topeka, Kansas. Um, I represent the Great Plains Annual Conference of the United Methodist Church. Scott Brewer is the Director of, of Administrative Services of Great Plains Annual Conference. He's the owner of, of this parcel. And this, uh, this request is for two variances. The parcel is a 3.76 acre parcel, which contains, um, a closed church, two church cemeteries, which adjoin the church, and a res, one residential home property. They're all in the one parcel. The residential property had previously been used as a parsonage with, with the church. The church is now closed. And so there's, there's not a need for the parsonage. And the request is for, uh, for two variances made in connection with, with an application for preliminary and final plat, essentially to split the closed church and the two cemeteries from the residential property. The reason for the request for variances is because of the size. Um, variance one requests, um, a minimum with, it requests variance because of the minimum size of the residential lot, which does abut on a major street on, uh, 78, South 78th Street. And, um, variance two is requesting a variance from the minimum frontage of that residential lot because it abuts a major street.
Okay, anything else you'd like to add?
No.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this case? Please come forward or raise your hand if you're online. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We will go to, uh, Mr. Toy and get his comments. Sorry, I don't know what to call you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is, uh, conjunction with the plat that we're here later this evening with Planning Commission. But this is really to split two lots, the church from the west and then this house in the southeast corner of the property. And the reason for the variance that you stated was that uh, 78th Street itself is classified as, I believe, a Class B thoroughfare, which in the area isn't really functioning like a Class B thoroughfare, but nonetheless, uh, it's a major street or, or a major street plan and therefore does have the frontage or the lot area, and that's why the variance is being requested. Staff recommend approval, subject to stipulations outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move to approve BOZA 2022-068, subject to staff stipulations.
Motion made for approval by Commissioner Ward. Is there a second? Commissioner Straws, is that a second? I'm sorry, Commissioner Connolly, is it a second?
Yes, that's a second.
Sorry, I can't see who was at the top of my list. Uh, seconded by Commissioner Connolly, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Miller? Straws?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes six in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
Our next application is BOZA 2022-069. Austin Thompson with Atlas Land Consulting for property at 4601 Gibbs Road. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Wishap, I've got you queued up to speak. I'm assuming you're representing Atlas in this case. Hello? Andrea? Unmute yourself. There you go. You're unmuted now. Now you're muted. We're having some technical difficulty, Ms. Wishap. Are you not able to get unmuted? Byron, what do you want to do on this? Do you want to try to present?
I can present.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Not a problem. So the applicant has filed a variance for lot width depth ratio. As you can see here on the screen, it's pretty narrow along the front, along Gibbs Road. But it then opens up, it opens up actually as you get deeper in the property, it gets very wide and very deep. And so, um, this used to be old farm, old farmstead, excuse me. And they're wanting to associate with the changes on that's coming before you tonight, uh, from R1 to Ag. So, um, the need for the variance, like I said, is for the lot with lot depth ratio. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience to speak? Yes. You need to come to the microphone if you're going to speak. Are you speaking in favor of or in opposition to this case? All right, go ahead. Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Ashley Gammon, and I live at 4610 Oak Grove Court. Um, and it would actually be south of the property, not pictured in that image, but, um, they are wanting to turn this into agricultural. And, um, I am in favor of that. Right now, they, uh, do not have use to a driveway to get any, like larger lawn mowers up there and stuff like that. Um, but I am in favor of it.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else want to speak to this case in favor of or in opposition? Okay, seeing none, we've heard from staff. Any other, uh, questions for staff? If not, I'll stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move to approve BOZA 2022-069, subject to staff stipulations and approval.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Ward for approval, seconded by Commissioner Armstrong. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Miller? Straws?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes six in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
That takes us to, uh, Mr. Chairman, do you want to go ahead and make an announcement about?
Yes, I do. Thank you. For those of you here for the City Planning Commission, we are running a few minutes behind. We've got a few more cases to hear, just a couple. As soon as we do, we'll take a five-minute break and we'll convene the City Planning Commission promptly thereafter. Uh, and also, Ms. Wishap, you might want to get out of the Zoom meeting and try to come back in because I know you've got a case coming up, uh, so we can hear you the next time. That might help. Thank you.
Our next application is BOZA 2022-071. Mark Wolf with Home Rehab LLC for property at 4547 Melody Lane. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf?
Yeah, my name's Mark Wolf. My address, office address is 8101 College Boulevard, Suite 100, Novum Park, Kansas. Um, I have been a local real estate agent and local real estate investor for the past 30 years. Um, I recently purchased a property at 4547 Melody Lane from the, uh, kids of the gentleman that lived there. Um, it's in serious disrepair. It was a duplex that at some point someone has taken the center wall out of and taken the stairwell to the basement, which splits off to both garages out. And they floored over that to make it one big open unit. Um, you have three bedrooms and two baths on one side, three bedrooms and two baths on the other side. It used to walk down to a basement with, and it's a raised ranch-style duplex with two garages on either side of it. The driveway is in the back of the property and that's how each unit would access that, their garages. My proposed plan with this was to, again, convert it back to a duplex. And when I went in to, uh, pull a permit at the city, the city actually informed me, and by the way, there's duplexes on both sides of this property. There's duplexes across the street and there's duplexes on additional streets in that neighborhood. Uh, my proposed budget on this property with interest carry, taxes and insurance is $125,000. It needs a lot of work. I currently have 60-plus properties all over Kansas City. Uh, we maintain our properties extremely well. And like I said, we've been doing it for 30 years now. Um, but when I went to the city to pull the permit, they told me that there's actually eight duplexes on that street that are zoned or improperly zoned or won. And so this is one of them. And I asked if they could just, um, change it to R2. And they said that they didn't have that instrument in place and that I would need to come here. And so here I am. And, um, that's really, I mean, again, it's going to be a nice property, great property. It'll be completely remodeled. New kitchens, new bathrooms, the siding updated, new roof, uh, all new flooring. And we're looking to attract a very, add value to the neighborhood and to attract great tenants, long-term tenants.
Okay, thank you. Questions for the applicant? Just one second. Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone want to speak in favor of or in opposition to, please come forward or raise your hand if you're online. Good, I, I need you to address me. Thank you. Go ahead. Go ahead, give me your name and address again, please.
My name is Ashley Gammon.
Thank you, Ms. Gammon.
And address to?
Yes, please.
It's at 4610 Oak Grove Court.
Okay.
My home, our backyard fence backs directly up to the property. Um, I did have an opportunity to meet with Mr. Wolf and hear about the changes that will be made. Um, there are neighbors across the street that were unable to make it tonight. Um, they are elderly and had trouble getting out. But our concern was with it being a duplex, it is not set up. So it was turned into a single-family home in 1980. The home is not set up with separate entrances like all the other properties on the street.
When you reference that, are you referencing other duplexes?
Other duplexes.
And they have separate driveways for each unit?
They can have a shared driveway. This one is oddly set up because you enter through and make a J shape to go to the backyard. So it's not a garage that's on the front. They're underneath.
You're going down and around behind the parts, parts, huh?
Correct, yes.
There's photos.
Um, the entrance is a shared entrance. You go in the front and then from there it's a foyer. And then I believe, um, the plan is to break it off into the separate units that way. Um, at this time, there's a single back door on the bottom side that is accessible from the driveway, as well as the kitchen has dual doors that open onto the deck. Um, we're having trouble envisioning how it can be turned into a duplex without shared spaces like that. You don't have a yard that will be split directly down the middle. It's a wedge shape, so.
Or do I have the front yard or the backyard?
Um, the backyard, the, the wedge shape, the land would be far to the, to the side of the house. That would be to the east.
Okay.
Um.
So what are your primary concerns that I can get you some answers to?
How it is going to set, be set up to a duplex, to where there won't be concerns with fighting over shared space of driveways and doorway entrances and stuff like that.
Okay, all right. Anything else I can get you an answer to while you're here? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this case? Please raise your hand or come forward. Okay, seeing none, we will close the public portion. We'll go back to the applicant. And can you address just some concerns of the neighbor with regard to how you're going to set this up, given?
I can. Um, I know you guys can't really see this, but there was a stairwell, a shared foyer.
Right.
And there was a stairwell that went down. There was a wall, the, and two doors that went.
So the walls divided, the staircase divided the two units?
Yes.
Upstairs and then, of course, downstairs?
Yes. And it dropped downstairs and there was a shared area down there with the single door. Um, both can access their, uh, and there's actually walls on either side downstairs too, into the garages, existing walls. So we're going to take it back to its original format with a shared foyer with a, uh, a fire-rated wall down the middle. And then take it back to the two kitchens, three bedrooms, two bath, two car garages, um, with the shared staircase down.
And the kitchens will have access to the outside by way of a deck or something like that? Okay, and then what about the downstairs, uh, exit area? There's only one exit door there now. Is that, was that to the foyer or is that?
That, that, there's a finished area, common area down there, um, that, and again, the way this is set up is there's walls on either side of that stairwell down. And you access your garage and your laundry area and everything through that.
What about that exit door that, that's?
It's, it's a single door and we can, we can add to another door. That's not an issue. The property is in such bad disarray that we're going to, um, pretty much do everything.
Is this, is the second exit door, is the exit door even necessary?
I don't think so because they both have their garage doors and they both can enter their own space through that common area where the stairwell lands.
And then what about the, what about the shared parking area as far as coming in? Is there only, does it go all the way around the property and back out the other side?
It does not.
Okay, so.
And this is a, you know, obviously that's been there. We're going to, um, obviously reseal that driveway. Um, completely clean the property up. But that's, on, on raised ranches, that's how people access the properties.
Okay, all right, thank you. We'll now go to staff. I'm sorry, any questions for the applicant before he sits back down? I do. Okay, Commissioner Beth?
Yeah, the, it looked like on one of the pictures, you have the front picture there you can pull up. It looked like there was a driveway or a parking space added onto the side there.
There is, and I don't know when that was added, but you can't access the garages from that parking.
Right, I, I was just concerned, listening to what her concern was is, is with these shared spaces and, and two different occupants that, you know, about fighting over parking and, and I, I know the layout of the, the duplex because there's some up there off 62nd and State Avenue that's similar where you have the, you go in the common thing and they each have doors.
Right, common driveway. Um, the, the, there's actually ample parking for this unit in both spaces. Uh, actually more than most units, uh, and duplexes.
I'm assuming the left side of the parking would be for a guest who came, comes in the front yard without blocking the driveway so that the other tenant couldn't get down and around it or in and out of their garage.
Correct.
All right.
And that's something we police as landlords, uh, well, because we have lots of duplexes and we have lots of triplexes and shared parking lots. And, um, we don't have any trouble with that.
Is there enough room for, uh, egress in and out without, I noticed in, in one of the staff reports of the meeting minutes that people are backing into the fence of the neighboring owner, which I'm assuming is Ms. Gammon's property.
I didn't see signs of that, but there, that is a large driveway, existing driveway. It's probably existed since it was built in 1966. I can't imagine needing more turnaround space than what there is.
Well, we all know how tenants are though.
I, I agree.
As much as you can't imagine if they can, if they can find a way to run over a fence.
But I have my, so if you see the dumpster, can we go to the back?
Yep. I mean, it looks like there's a lot of space back there, but at the same time.
Today I went and took pictures and I literally have a Denali XL, extended Denali. I pulled it in front of the dumpster, backed up without hitting the fence and pulled out of the driveway for. So there's a lot of room.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, alright, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Commissioner Conley got his hands raised.
I'm sorry?
Commissioner Conley has his hand raised.
I've got you. I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Conley.
I guess the title company didn't tell you that this was not a duplex? That's one question.
Well, the title company, I just didn't think it would be difficult to go in and pull a permit and it, it is a duplex, but it's not, I, I agree that it's zoned R one as are eight other duplexes along the street.
Okay, the title will only provide a legal description. It won't provide what their current uses or anything like that.
Okay, so my other question is, is it two gas meters and two electrical boxes?
You know, I can't honestly answer that one, but that would be our goal.
So it's not that now? Is that what you're saying?
He's not sure.
I can't hon- honestly answer that. I didn't check that.
We'll address that with staff to see if that's a requirement.
Yeah, and again, that's not with, with two tenants in there, we would want separate utilities anyways.
Any follow up, Commissioner Conley?
Okay, then I miss it. I'm thinking.
Yeah, I'll address that with staff when we get to staff report. Commissioner Straws?
Yeah, I, I was probably going to make a comment to Commissioner Conley's question. I actually live in a house that was done a similar way and everything is separate. And they joined it all together and it's easily put back, but I'm, I know staff will speak to that. I just had a personal experience because that's currently what I live in.
Alright, thank you. Any further questions for the applicant before we allow him to sit down? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to staff and get Mr. Toy's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So to answer your question, yes, utilities will be split, whether it's electrical, gas, water.
Is that a requirement of rental license?
It's required by building inspection, you have separate utilities for duplexes.
Okay, thank you.
So this was rezoned back in, say nineteen sixty six, point of rezoning from R one to R two and then yeah, went back now to R, now it's R one. So this duplex is actually legal, legal on conforming. And so the way to rectify that, it actually used to go back to change zone to R two or in this case RP two. Staff recommends approval. We'd like to add one more condition, which would be condition number seven. Which we to repair the sidewalk that's at the front of the, the front of the house towards the street. I know it's kind of steps down. Repair that sidewalk. It's been in full. It looks like it's kind of chipped and cracked. So we wanted to make sure that it's taken care of. With that, staff recommends approval, separate conditions outlined on the staff report.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion.
Commissioner Ward?
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move to approve Boza two zero two two dash zero seven one, subject staff stipulations and comments as well as the addition of condition number seven.
Alright, thank you. Motion made for approval by Commissioner Ward with the added stipulations made by Director, I'm sorry. By Mr. Toy. Is that a second, Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Miller? Straws?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal, subject to the revised staff conditions, passes six in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
Our next appeal is BOZA twenty twenty two dash zero seven two. Austin Thompson with Atlas Land Consulting for a property at fifty one ten Hutton Road. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson, are you in the audience or anyone representing the applicant in this case? Fifty one ten, is that you, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead and talk into the mic for me.
I'm sorry. Normally I don't like to speak into microphones because you heard.
That's.
This is Jayce Wilson. I live at fifty one ten Hutton Road. And I come before you guys to ask for a variance to the restriction of a thousand square foot building. Andrea is supposed to be on here, but that's okay. I can hopefully answer all the questions and present my case.
Okay, go ahead.
Alrighty, so the background of this is that we'd like to build a sixteen hundred square foot building. We didn't come to that, my wife and I didn't come to that choice lightly. We have antique tractors and antique cars that we used to have on her, our family farm in Iowa. And deaths have happened and, and things happen with families and we were, always thought we'd move back, but grandchildren happen down here, so this is our home. And we'd like to, in looking at this process, that's a big building. I, I agree. But we also have a very big yard, one point seven acres. If I had a much smaller yard, I could put a thousand square foot building on it. As long as it didn't take up forty percent of the space. This is a sixteen hundred square foot building going on a sixty thousand square foot yard. So that's kind of our premise that it's not too big. We also care about the looks of things. We bought this house in two thousand and six. We put new roof, new, you know, we really done a lot to the property. It was owned by Ron Kometsky before. And hopefully we've continued to make it a nice property, get along very well with the neighbors. I've talked to several of the neighbors, not all of them, about this property. We've been asked by this people, I don't know what their titles are in the, in the, in the unified government about driveways. We'll do that. We've had an engineering study done to make sure that, you know, the, while they're doing the work and stuff that, that erosion control is in place, we'll do that. We made sure that the colors match. Believe me, my wife's not going to let me put a barn red building on my property or on our property. So we've done a lot of things. We've talked to our neighbors about it. We, we made sure that the inset, we, we have such a big property. We could have put it at the set in lines, but talk, but knowing that this is a big building, it's going to have a, it's going to have a very high peak. We've dropped it back down into our yard as much as possible. So that we could minimize that site, line of sight, horizon sight by our neighbors and especially the ones that live down low. And I've talked to him and he's like, man, I'm looking forward to you building. It's so much nice. Look at, he points to his neighbors, look at some of these people's property. It'd be nice to have a nice building. Again, we've brought it in, inset. And then, you know, I didn't, I didn't, this is a thing I took around to the neighbors to show them. Of course, this time of year they're not allowed out, but these are some of the things that me and my father-in-law have done. Restored several, like fifteen antique tractors together. When he passed away, the whole goal was that every one of his grandchildren would have one. And so we have four of those. And I also own two other tractors and there's antique cars involved, Model T and a Model A. We'd like to bring those here along with our RV to put up. And I think it'll be a nice building and I think it'll, it'll certainly house things. It's a five bedroom home, so we have children that have left, come back from college, went to Australia right now. So we've got our garage full of their stuff too, those types of things. And just having a nice building like this will help, help with all the things that we do. That's really, I think I've addressed the, the size as far as the variance request. We've had, we have talked about attaching it, but that, that doesn't really work for my wife because she doesn't think attached buildings look good to houses. I mean, she's, it's her personal deal. But, so we've thought through a lot of things and, and, and what did these tractors be used for? And I know people can't see, but these are parades and stuff that, you know, we're down here, we, we could, we'd like to participate in the car shows and things like that down here. This, this week, my brother-in-law said, we need to come up here and get these things running because there's a big parade. I'd like to have you guys all in. But the truth is, we, we don't have time to, you know, we live here now. And so anyways, we hope that, that the choice of the site also, we have a water line, buried power line, septic system here, so that where we had to put it was, we just didn't have everywhere to put it. And we chose that site and we brought it in again to reduce the height. Because our, our back point of our yard is the highest point in that, in that block area. So I, that's my presentation.
Okay, just real quick, you have an existing shed on the property and it says here on your, your platter, your schematic, that's going to be removed, correct?
Yeah, that will be removed, yep.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience, online or in person, want to speak to this case one way or the other, please come forward or raise your hand. Seeing anybody, so we'll close the public portion. We'll go to Director Hand, who is now with us and get staff comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is going to be Director Planer's design. Again, we have four, say, variance from the standard of maximum size of an accessory dwelling in this zone of a thousand, apps contesting for sixteen hundred square feet. This is in the Prairie Delaware Piper Master Plan area. You can see a site right here. Parcel is actually one point four acres. If you measure all the way to the street, it's a lot more land. Parcel is not the land. There's a lot of right away at this section of Hutton Road for several different reasons, I would imagine. We've received no letters of support, no letters of opposition. There are no notices of violation. On calculations like this, staff generally uses a rule of thumb that's proportional to the size of the lot, to the size of the building. We've had many of these before us before, often with recommendations of approval, but they've met that sort of rule of thumb. This one is just outside the rule of thumb. We also don't think that there's anything extraordinary about this parcel as it relates to this five specific conditions for variances. So staff does recommend now, we do have conditions of approval if the board is on appeals wants to move forward with approval. One of those conditions of approval is to get it to that rule of thumb square footage, which would be fifteen hundred square feet. Again, we defer to the board of zoning bills.
Alright, thank you. Questions for staff? There are no questions for staff. I will stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward?
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move to approve Boza two zero two two dash zero seven two, sub staff stipulations and comments.
Motion is made for approval at the request of sixteen hundred square feet. Is there a second?
To point of clarification, the conditions of approval limited to fifteen hundred. If you want to allow a sixteen hundred foot building as proposed by the applicant, you would have to strike that condition, which would be condition number one.
What is your motion, Commissioner Ward? I took it one way.
We can hold the condition of fifteen hundred square feet.
I'm sorry?
The condition is fifteen hundred square feet would be acceptable.
Alright, the motion is for fifteen hundred square feet in accordance with staff.
Rule of thumb.
Rule of thumb. Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Fifteen hundred square feet?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Armstrong. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes six in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, that takes us to our last appeal on the agenda. And that's a BOZA twenty twenty two dash zero seven five. Mike and Paula Wallace for property at one two two zero zero Donahue Row. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Hey, Mrs. Wallace, I've got you queued up to speak. You should have rights to speak. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please, and tell us what you'd like to do.
Good evening. My name is Paula Westerfield Wallace. My address is one two two zero zero Donahue Road, Kansas City, Kansas. And what I would like to propose is we bought this house in two thousand and twenty one. We have six dogs that we compete with professionally and we would like, what we do. We have already a kennel in the back of our yard. We, it's supposed to be two hundred feet from each property line, but our property isn't even two hundred feet wide. So that's why we're applying for a variance. And the kennel is thirty by fifteen. And there's six runs included in the kennel. We have upgraded our electricity from one hundred amps to two hundred amps. One hundred amps coming into the house. We ran another hundred amps back to the kennel. We installed a mini split so the kennel would be heated and cooled for our dogs. And we also have a, a meter back there, or not a meter, but a, for our camper, a plug-in. But yes, that's why we're applying for the variance because of the, where the kennel sits on our property.
Okay, so the kennel was built after you purchased the property or was this already existing on the property before you moved there?
No, we moved there and we ordered it. It was made off-site and brought to us on the back of a tractor trailer. And it is, it's restating, it's sitting on a cement slab.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor of or in opposition to, please raise your hand. I've got Mavis Hutchings. Ms. Hutchings, go ahead and please give us your name and address.
My name is Mavis Yvonne Hutchings. I live at one two one four one Donahue Road, which is directly south from their property. Don't have any opposition with that. The building actually sits behind their house. So you don't really see a whole lot from the road and they sit kind of up on a hill a little bit. And again, I don't have any problem with the animals because we don't really hear them barking or any issues. And it actually, it's a very beautiful building that they brought in. It's not like a dump shed. It's really nice with a nice black fencing. It's so it's actually made the property look much better.
Okay, thank you very much. Jamie Cochrane?
Hi, so my name is Jamie Cochrane. I am right next door. My address is twelve two twenty Donahue Road. And I just wanted to say that I am completely one hundred percent for this. When they moved in, they have been nothing but amazing neighbors. Their dogs, we've never had any issues with. You know, we've gone over and gotten to know them. My kids love to go over and play with them. And we've never had any issues with their dogs at all.
Building's nice. It's a beautiful.
Is that all?
That's it.
Alright, thank you. I've got Wattier.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, this is Quentin Stacy Wattier.
Give me your name and address, please.
Wattier, Clinton and Stacy. Address is one two one four zero Donahue Road. And we're kind of on the, I guess, the east side, the east side of the property.
And I'm sorry, I, I must not have got your, your first testimony. Are you in support or opposed?
Uh, opposed. Because we're on the, on the opposite side of that where with the amount of dogs, there is been some dog, you know, barking complaints. There's been, you know, on and off dogs running on our property. And also some safety concerns just because we have, you know, a couple of little kids, stuff like that. You know, unknowing what, what could happen there, but so on this side, we're opposed.
Alright, and I'm sorry, what was your address again, please, Mr. Wattier?
One two one four zero Donahue Road.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go back to Mrs. Wallace. Can you address any concerns with dogs getting loose or anything like that or noise?
Yes, sir. When I know that the dogs have been barking, I go out and I bring them in. I work from home. I work for UMB Bank. I work from home. I either bring them in or I put bark collars on them. I've spoken with Clinton Waiter that had just spoke and I, when we moved in and I went to his address, my husband and I, and I said, please let us know if these dogs are bothering you and it'll be taken care of. I understand dogs will bark. I mean, they, dogs will bark if somebody's walking down the street or coyotes, you know, loose or whatever. But I've talked to him personally to let us know that, you know, if there's a nuisance, I will take care of it. And he said about his little kids, you know, our dogs are very well trained. I have three German short hair pointers and two English pointers that we hunt with. They have been to professional trainers. They're very obedient. So they're around, like Jamie spoke before, around her kids. I would invite the rest of the neighbors over to introduce our dogs. And we've also participated in Pheasants Forever and Quails Forever Banquets where we've taken our dogs to show them their obedience around children and. Their, what they do. And about running on Mr. Waiters property. I would say when we first moved in with twenty twenty-one, they did go on his property, and that has been taken care of. We have a six-foot fence all the way around that. And I want to go back to the safety of his, if the kids go on his, if the dogs go on his property, you know, they're friendly. I mean, I would hope to have neighbors that would help me get them back. In two defense, you know, they're not going to attack anybody. They're not vicious. Like I said, we compete with them competitively, so they're always around other people and other dogs. So they're not aggressive whatsoever. But we have addressed, you know, them going on the property, and when I take them from the house out to the kennel, I have leashes on them. I have let one go because he heals beside me. But I, at the beginning of twenty twenty-one, yes, he is correct, but I've, we've worked really hard to try to, you know. You know, with the leashes and back and forth from the house.
Okay, and so the, the need for six dogs is because they're competition dogs? Is that why you have, that you need six?
Yeah.
And guiding.
Yes, we compete with them nationally, all around the United States, and we also use them to guide hunts for corporate hunts like out at Muddy Creek in Topeka. Or kennel kennels out of Higginsville. We use them to guide hunts for corporate. Out of, yep.
All right, thank you. Any other questions that need to be resolved? Okay, go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting, and we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Design. This case is being heard in conjunction with special use permit twenty twenty-two zero eight one, which will be heard later this evening by the City Planning Commission. I think it's important to note that. This variance is not for dogs. It's for the accessory structure that the dogs are currently housed in, so let's not mix the two. The special use permit being heard later this evening is the code required for or more dogs need an S U P. This one specifically in the R one YCO, which if you all remember, is not a current zoning code. It's a historic zoning code that we can no longer create, but it's leftover from before unification. That code specifically for accessory structures that do have animals in them, in this case, the kennel, have to be more than two hundred feet from any lot line. It doesn't get that anywhere on this property. But because it is an old outdated code, staff's recommendation for this variance is to deny it. And as a condition of approval for the special use permit being heard later this evening, is a requirement to rezone this property to R one, which does not have the two hundred foot requirement for an accessory structure as it relates to animals. We would just have the regular R one zoning category. Again, lots of R one, lots of A G, lots of YCO mix in this part of town. So there's nothing outside. We think that's the appropriate way forward. Again, this isn't the Prairie Delaware Piper Master Plan area. Before this evening, we had received no letters of support or opposition. There are some old notices of violation on a property, but before this property, this current property owners, they've all been addressed. And again, generally speaking, or specifically speaking, I should say, staff recommends denial because this is a self-imposed hardship. We do have conditions of approval if the Board of Zoning Appeals wants to approve, but staff's recommendation is to think beyond this variance and look to what we think is the right course of action, which is to recommend approval of the special use permit and have them come back for changes under R one. If in that sequence of tasks, no one would require them to tear down the kennel, no one would require them to not have dogs. As long as they're working towards that change zone, nothing changes, except the applicant would have to do a little bit more paperwork and come before you guys can.
So there's a path forward, possibly?
There's a path forward. If this gets denied, the S U P gets denied, then we're talking about demolishing kennels and not allowing more than three dogs in this property. So again, there's a, if you look at it on the surface and you read the staff reports ahead of time, you might kind of wonder why we approved, denied, recommended not this one and approved that one. I just wanted to get it all out there ahead of time so you understand that we believe the right course of action here is a change zone to R one, not the variance.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Have, you just explained it to us. Has this been explained to the Wallaces?
Yes.
And is there a reason why they didn't choose that option?
We thought of it late in the process and they wanted to just see what happened.
Oh, okay.
Gunnar, what do we get into when we talk about, when we talk about, you know, more than three dogs, you know, in a residential location? I mean, this is a property that's on a smaller parcel where there are neighbors that join multiple sides of it. I mean, when you get into noise ordinances and things like that, I mean, six dogs is six dogs. I mean, it's not going to take much to set them off. I mean, we have one dog and it just takes an Amazon driver, it takes a neighbor walking by a window or anything to get one dog worked up. Take that times six.
So the intent of the YCO code was to do that by creating greater distances between those potential nuisances and adjacent properties. Again, this parcel, the way it is, the size of it and the shape of it is you can't get those distance requirements so that negates the whole reason that that standard exists in this code. For R one YCO. If you get out of the R one YCO and go to R one as a hypothetical, you would just have to meet all the setback requirements, but you'd be held to the performance standards of the. The noise standards. And generally, that's anything sustained over a long period of time, over than, I think it's sixty-five decibels, which is basically the sound of a toilet flushing. So it's not a very high threshold. It is a hard threshold to prove and enforce. So we hadn't received, although one of the applicants said that they, excuse me, one of the neighbors had said that they had. Issued some complaints. We didn't see any of those when we did all of our searches for reports. So there is a path where through three one one or. You know, in this location, it'd be Casey K P D, who is in charge of forcing the noise ordinance, where you could create a. A log of complaints, and then that would get addressed if and when the S U P was approved and reheard, because S U Ps are not indefinite unless they are indefinite.
Patrick?
Mr. Chairman, there's actually a specific ordinance in our animal code that talks about excessive noise for animals, and it's basically. Any noise produced by an animal that is so loud and continuous or untimely as to disturb the sleep or peace of a neighbor. So those are, those are handled in our animal court.
Thank you. And then one other question with regard to the way the dogs are being used for commercial purposes. Is a business license required?
No, I don't think so.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Saying none, I'll stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Armstrong, I move that the Kansas City Kansas Board of Zoning Appeals deny the application based on staff comments and the path forward.
Thank you. Motion is made for denial by Commissioner Armstrong. Is there a second? Is that a second, Commissioner Connolly?
That's a second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for denial? Saying none, roll call.
Ward.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Straws.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to deny this appeal for the reasons outlined in the staff report passes six in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the Board of Zoning Appeals agenda.
Thank you, and thank you all for your patience. We will take a five-minute recess, and then we will convene the City Planning Commission, and we hope to get your cases soon. Thank you all for your patience.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Appreciate you.
Janet, are you ready?
Yes, I am. Is everybody back?
Commissioner Conley and Commissioner Miller, once we get your cameras on, we'll be ready to go. Okay, thank you all for your patience. I want to welcome you to the February thirteenth meeting of the City Planning Commission. My name is Jeff Carson. I'll be serving as chair of tonight's meeting. Take a couple of introductions before we start. We have done our hand with the Department of Land Use and Urban Planning with us, along with Janet Parker, who is the secretary to, excuse me, executive assistant to the Department of Land Use and Urban Planning. Patrick Waters is with us with the U G Legal Staff, and we have the following planning commissioners present this evening. Commissioner Brandy Armstrong, Commissioner Duane Beth, Commissioner Aaron Ward are with me in the chambers, and we have Commissioner James Connolly. And Commissioner Joseph Straws and Commissioner Jake Miller online. With that, I will turn it over to Secretary Parker, who will read the opening statement on how we'll handle tonight's meeting.
Mr. Chairman, before I read the statement, I have a couple of changes to the agenda. The first one, under the consent agenda, item B one, plant twenty twenty-two dash zero four four for Eric Gentry Victory Jeep at seventeen oh one North One Hundredth Terrace. We need to remove that from the consent agenda so that it can be heard with the corresponding preliminary and final plan review application, P R twenty twenty-two dash zero five two.
All right, thank you.
The second change is that, as I stated at the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, change of zone twenty twenty-two dash zero four six. Change of zone from A G Agriculture YCO District to C P three Planned Commercial District. Master Plan Amendment M P L twenty twenty-two dash zero two six and Plant twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one at one three seven zero zero Marks and Road. Have been removed from the agenda this evening due to a statutory notice requirement issue. They have been held over until the March thirteen twenty twenty-three. Meeting so that we can correct that notice.
Thank you.
And I will go ahead and read the statement now. We would like to welcome those participating to the meeting of the City Planning Commission. The members are participating remotely by Zoom webinar or in person in the commission chamber. Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background and plan to stay visible during the meeting. Planning Commission members, use the raise your hand feature to speak. After Chairman Carson recognizes you, unmute your microphone, and please state your name when you begin to speak. If you're in person in the commission chamber, when Chairman Carson recognizes you, please state your name before speaking. For those members of the public in attendance via Zoom or telephone, use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak on an issue. The chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak, unmute your microphone, and state your name and address before giving your comments. If you are attending in person, please come to the microphone at the front of the room when the application is called, and the chairman will. when the application is called, and the Chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting, and anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs, which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The Planning Commission is a voluntary body of citizens which review each zoning proposal. For all change of zones, special use permits, vacations, and preliminary plan reviews on tonight's agenda, the Planning Commission makes recommendations to the Unified Government Board of Commissioners, who will then make the final decisions on Thursday, March 2, 2023. For final plans and final plan reviews heard tonight, the Planning Commission's decision is final, and there will not be another hearing. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining their proposal. Please note that the applicant will be given 15 minutes to present their case. The 15 minutes includes the applicant, consultants, and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the Planning Commission will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be called upon and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be called upon and allowed to make their statements and ask questions. Please note that each member of the public who wishes to speak will be given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker may request to extend their time, and the Planning Commission may, by two-third majority vote, extend any speaker's time in five-minute increments. The Chairman will ask for a show of hands of those persons in support and in opposition that do not wish to speak. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed, and the public will only be allowed to address the Commission if a question is directed to them. The Planning Commission will discuss the application and make their recommendation. If persons in opposition want to formally protest a change of zone or special use permit, a means is available by a legal protest petition, which can be obtained along with the necessary instructions by emailing the Planning and Urban Design Department at planninginfo@wycokck.org tomorrow morning. Any application receiving a unanimous vote of recommendation by the Planning Commission will appear on the Consent Agenda of the Unified Government Board of Commissioners. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the Consent Agenda by the applicant, a member of the Unified Government Commission, or other interested parties, the Planning Commission's recommendation will be adopted. The Consent Agenda is heard at the beginning of the meeting at 7:00 PM. The Planning Commission will also have a Consent Agenda as part of their meeting this evening. The Consent Agenda is the first part of the agenda, and items on the Consent Agenda are final plans, final plans, or special use permit renewals that have received a staff recommendation to approve. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the Consent Agenda by the applicant, a member of the staff, a member of the Planning Commission, or other interested parties, the staff recommendation on all of the items on the Consent Agenda will be adopted by the Planning Commission at one time. I will read a list of agenda items on the Consent Agenda, and when I have completed the list, the Chairman will ask if there are any requests to remove items. This is your time to use the Raise Your Hand feature, be recognized, and request that an item be removed from the Consent Agenda if you do not agree with the staff's recommendation. If you are in the Commission Chamber, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and the item you wish to remove from the Consent Agenda. The Planning Commission is required to disclose contacts about any item on the Planning Commission Agenda. Before each item, I will ask if any contacts have been made, and members of the Commission will be asked to disclose those contacts. Please note that your opinions will be forwarded to the governing body for their consideration in making a final decision. In addition, those who receive notices for this evening's hearing will again receive them for the hearing on Thursday, March 2, 2023, at 7:00 PM. I will now read the items on the Consent Agenda. Consideration of the January 9, 2023 minutes. Special Use Permit SP 2022-118 Ryan Stoops for property at 3151 West 45th Avenue. Renewal of a special use permit SP 2021-080, which expires March 10, 2023, to operate a short-term rental. Plan Review Applications PR 2022-051 Rich Eckert with Bettis Asphalt and Construction. Final Plan Review for an asphalt plant at 1625 South 86th Street. Plan Review Application PR 2022-053 Gilberto Guerrero. Final Plan Review for a used auto dealership and auto repair facility at 7512 Leavenworth Road. Plan Review Application PR 2022-054 Fernando Gomez. Final Plan Review for expansion of a church parking lot at 2907 North 81st Street. The items I have just read are on the Consent Agenda. At this time, does any member of the Planning Commission wish to disclose any contact on any of these items?
No.
Please include the following items as part of the record for all of the items on the Consent Agenda. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated February 13, 2023, the application and other documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case contained in the official file, the publication in the Echo for the special use permit, and the notices to property owners. The Commission will vote to approve in one vote these items unless someone requests that an item be removed from the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the Commission that would like anything removed from the Consent Agenda for special consideration? Saying none, is there anyone in the audience, online, or in person that would like to have something removed from the Consent Agenda for special consideration? Now, Rose, sorry, Rose. Iels, yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you. My name is Rose Iels. I live at 506 North Fourth Street. And I know that the next thing on the agenda is going to be, I believe there's going to be a report on the short-term rental policy. And one of the...
Go ahead.
One of the things that I was hoping to make a point about during that was that I feel like we should have a moratorium at this point on approval of any more short-term rentals until the new ordinance has been ironed out and approved.
Okay, is that something that, are you wanting to have something removed from the Consent Agenda before going forward?
So it would be SP 2022-118, which is on the Consent Agenda.
And you would like that removed from the Consent Agenda for special consideration?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, saying none, I will entertain a motion on the remaining Consent Agenda items. From the Commission.
Commissioner Armstrong, I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Motion made by Commissioner Armstrong to approve the remaining items of the Consent Agenda. Is that a second? Commissioner Miller?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve the remaining items on the Consent Agenda passes. Six in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, and none of the items with the exception of the minutes will go forward to the Board of Commissioners.
None of these items go forward, not even the minutes.
Not even the minutes, nothing. Alright, thank you.
That will take us back to the item that was removed from the Consent Agenda. SP 2022-118 Ryan Stoops Renewal of a special use permit SP 2021-080, which expires March 10, 2023, to operate a short-term rental at 3151 West 45th Avenue.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Stoops, are you in the audience? Online or in person? Ryan Stoops? And he is not. I'm going to go to Director Han. Are you able to present on this case for me? Thank you.
Thank you. This is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Design. This is a short-term rental renewal. It's their second approval, first renewal. It's in the Rosedale area master plan. We received note letters of support, note letters in opposition. There are no notice violations on this property. The previous approval was for one year as per UG Protocol for non-occupied short-term rentals. Staff recommends approval for two years with a maximum of seven people and two cars off-street.
Okay, any questions for Director Hand on the presentation of this case? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand. Ms. Iels, you had this removed from the Consent Agenda. Are you wanting to speak to the case, one way or the other?
Well, I just wanted to reiterate the point that I made, which is that I think as long as we're going to change the ordinance for short-term rentals, that nothing else should be approved. Now, this one's already been approved. It's not new. So I would probably be okay with this one moving forward.
Okay, anyone else? Alright, seeing none, we will go close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Han to get his comment, which I think you've already provided.
Yeah, staff recommends approval for two years.
Any questions for staff? If not, I will stand for a motion.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move to approve SP 2022-118. Some staff stipulations and comments.
And that's for two years, correct?
That's for two years.
Thank you. Is that a second, Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Thank you. It's been, the motion is for approval for two years, made by Commissioner Ward, seconded by Commissioner Conley. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of the special use permit for two years passes. Six in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on March 2 at 7:00 PM before the Board of Commissioners.
That's correct. That concludes the Consent Agenda, and we will now move on to the NonConsent Agenda. Our first item is Change of Zone Application, COZ 2022-047 Austin Thompson with Atlas Land Consulting. Change of Zone from R1 Single Family District to AG Agriculture District for agricultural purposes at 4601 Gibbs Road. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated March 2, 2023, the application and other documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case contained in the official file, the notice in the Wyne Echo, the notices to property owners, and the testimony from the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting earlier this evening. Does any member of the Commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
I do not see Mr. Thompson, and I do not see Ms. Wishap online. Is there anyone here that's going to present this case? I guess we're going to you, Gunnar. I asked her to sign back on and haven't seen her since.
This is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Design. This case was heard in conjunction with, or being heard in conjunction with, case 2022-067, which I think was approved earlier this evening by the Board of Zoning Appeals. This is in the citywide master plan area in the Turner neighborhood, just south of Gibbs Road. You guys have seen this as the Board of Zoning Appeals earlier this evening. We received note letters of support, note letters of opposition. There are some old notices violation as it relates to the property before its sale to the current owner. Staff does recommend approval with a couple of conditions specific to allowing or recording an access agreement. The adjacent single-family home uses the curb cut on this property to access their property, so recording that access agreement, restoring the old driveway, which no longer has a curb cut back to open space, as well as maintaining the existing treats stands on, it would be the north, excuse me, the south, east, and west property lines to maintain some level of screening of those agricultural lands from adjacent single-family neighborhoods with that staff recommends approval.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for staff? I will go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this case? Please come forward or raise your hand online. Seeing no one, we will close the public portion of the meeting, and we've already heard from staff. Janet, if you would, please let the record show that Commissioner Ernst has joined the meeting. And with that said, I will accept a motion when ready on case COZ 2022-047.
Commissioner Armstrong, I move that we approve COZ 2022-047 with staff stipulations in this report.
Thank you. Commissioner made, excuse me, motion made for approval by Commissioner Armstrong. Is there a second? Second, seconded by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? Yep, hang on one second. Commissioner Conley?
Yeah, I guess it's for staff. Now, how, how, when would they have to have the driveway and all that stuff completed that you recommended? Is there a date on that?
So there's Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Design. All conditions are supposed to be met within six months of approval. Again, there's two here. One is to record an access agreement for the existing driveway, and then the other one is to remove an old driveway which no longer has a curb cut. It's just kind of a bunch of concrete on the front of the parcel on Gibbs Road. So the...
Yeah. Okay. I didn't see it anywhere on the notes. It's somewhere?
No, it's just standard practice. It's not in there. It says that to do it by six months.
Yeah, but would a partitioner know that? Or will you share that with them?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff or any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call, please, Janet?
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Mr. Ernst, I don't believe you were here for the entire hearing. Is that correct?
I was not on your side, but I was here.
Okay. That motion to recommend approval of this application subject to the conditions in the staff report passes six in favor and none opposed.
Alright, thank you. This will be heard once again on March 2 at 7:00 PM before the Board of Commissioners.
Our next application is Change of Zone Application, COZ 2022-052 Mark Wolf with Homes Rehab LLC. Change of Zone from R1 Single Family District to R2 Two-Family District for a duplex at 4601 Gibbs Road. for a duplex at forty-five forty-seven Melody Lane. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated February thirteen, twenty twenty-three. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot echo. The notices to property owners, the testimony at the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting earlier this evening. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Wolf, I know you were just here. Go ahead and you know the drill, give us your name and address and tell us what you'd like to do this time around.
Okay, Mark Wolf, address is eighty-one oh-one College Boulevard, Suite one hundred, Overland Park, Kansas. That's my office address. Like I said earlier, I'm a real estate investor and also a real estate agent, purchased the property as an investment property. My scope to rehab the property and bring it back into condition is with Kerry Taxes and Insurance, about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to renovate the property. It's in serious disrepair at the current time. We want to change the zoning, which actually, from what I understand, was improperly zoned from R-one back to R-two. And then go in and, and put the firewall back in and put the existing floor plan, the way it was built back, with the shared foyer, shared stake staircase down. And then both units will have their own entrances on the inside.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor of or in opposition to? Raise your hand or come to the microphone. I'm seeing none, so we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand and get his comments on this case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Design. This case was heard, heard in conjunction with Bozak twenty-two zero-seven-one, which was approved earlier this evening by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Again, we're looking to go from R-one to R-two for a legal non-conforming duplex that was, as the applicant noted, blanket zoned, rezoned a couple decades to go to, to R-one. This is, uh, excuse me, this is in the, these are all wrong, there it is. So we've received no letters in support, no letters in opposition. Staff recommends approval, similar to the Bozak case. We do have actually, for the changes on two additional conditions we'd like to add this evening. One is the UG standard driveway condition, which basically says yes to an improved driveway, which we know to do. In this case, the curb, I believe, is concrete, so we would require a concrete apron up to the right-of-way or property line on that driveway, and then the rest can be improved surface asphalt. Or, I think the county engineer also allows for permeable pavements and/or permeable pavers. And then we'd also like to add, again, like we did to the Bozak case, the repair of the existing sidewalk from the front door to that curb on, on Melody Lane.
All right, thank you. Questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move to approve COZ two-zero-two-two dash zero five-two subject staff stipulation and comments with the additional two conditions that were noted by Director Hand.
Thank you. Motion for approval by Commissioner Ward with the staff stipulations and the additional ones mentioned this evening. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Moved to seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of changes zone fifty-three, subject, or fifty-two, I'm sorry, subject to the revised conditions of staff passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again March second before the Board of Commissioners at seven PM. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that now takes us to our special use permit applications. The first one is special use permit SP twenty twenty-two dash zero eight-one. Paula Westerfield Wallace, special use permit to operate a dog kennel at one-two-two zero-zero Donahue Road. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated February thirteen, twenty twenty-three. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot echo, the notices to property owners and the testimony at the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting earlier this evening. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Westerfield Wallace, I've got you queued up to speak. I know we've already done this, but I need your name and address, please, once again for the record.
Good evening. It's Paula Westerfield Wallace at one-two-two zero-zero Donahue Road, Kansas City, Kansas.
Thank you very much. Go ahead and tell us about the project one more time and, and the special use permit you're requesting.
Um, currently, I have, my husband and I have six dogs. Five dogs are hunting dogs, one dog is not. It's a rat terrier. And we use our dogs to compete professionally in tournament hunts and also use them to guide at preserves as in kennel kennels in Higginsville or in Topeka at Muddy Creek. The dogs are actually inside dogs, but when we leave to go, you know, run errands or go on vacation, we do put them in the kennel. The kennel is fifteen by thirty with six runs. It has a mini split in it for air conditioning and heating and the dogs do not sleep out there. They come in at night, every night, since we've had this property since two, twenty twenty-one, they've slept out there twice. I've talked to my neighbors about if there's any issues with the dogs, please come to us. And it would be taken care of. Again, this is a kennel for our personal dogs that we use for competitions. We moved here from Shawnee. And, and we lived in a house and we had transformed our garage into a kennel and kept them in crates. So when we moved out here, we wanted a little bit of land to, you know, for our dogs to be able to go out in the kennel instead of being in crates. And they're in my house during the day. I work from home. I do put them out in the airing yard. It is a six-foot fence all the way around. Professionally installed, commercial grade. The kennel is on a cement slab. It was built off-site and moved to our property on back of a semi-truck. And these dogs have been professionally trained to do competitions and obedience. They are very gentle. We, when the dogs do bark, they, it is taken care of. I go out and I either bring them in or I apply a bark colors. Anything else, Mike?
No, I mean, the conversation is we're applying for various to keep the kennel. Is that?
This is the sub.
Okay, all right, got it.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions, Commissioner Conley?
Yes, I, I got a little confused, because at one time I heard you said that if only slept in the kennel twice, and then I also hear that you leave them out in the kennel when you go on vacation. You only been on vacation two days or, or you send them somewhere else when you go on vacation?
We haven't really gone, been on vacation. I would say that we have a camper, we take the camper stuff for a weekend. They, I would say, they slept out there maybe two nights, two times, so let's say four times, four nights.
Okay, so when you go on vacation, you take them with you most of the time or you just don't go on vacation?
No, when we go on vacation, my son stays here. And he watches the dogs. He brings them in. He does exactly what, he was raised with dogs, obviously. And we've had them all our life. And he's, they come in the house every night and he takes them out and lets them, if it's a nice day, he lets them, you know, run in the the airing yard. If need so, he brings them in or puts bark colors on them.
So by being your son, you're saying that the dogs are kinda used to him then, huh?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
All the dogs are.
Dogs don't behave different when they get different owners or something like that. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? You almost live in a very nice house, because you build an extremely nice kennel, so I'm surprised.
And I, I would like to speak to that, too. You know, we redid this whole house, gutted it, everything. And that's how much our dogs mean to us. They are our family, they're not pets. And my husband does not have kids. These, the child I was talking about before is mine. And so they are very well taken care of, trained, behaved and you know, it's, they're not just thrown out there and, you know, forgotten about.
There you go. Thank you very much. Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone that wants to speak to this case in favor of or in opposition to, please raise your hand or come to the podium. Got Jamie Cochran. Miss Cochran, go ahead, please.
My name is Jamie Cochran. I am the neighbor. I live at twelve-two-twenty Donahue Road. And I just wanted to state that, you know, again, I live next door. They have been absolutely amazing neighbors. I mean, when they first moved in, their, their first thought when they were cutting down a tree was, is this noise gonna bother your children? Because they know I have children. So, you know, they let us know at the very beginning if there's any issues with the dogs. Please come to us so that, you know, we can fix it, because we don't want issues. We want everyone to be happy. We want everyone to feel comfortable coming to us. I personally have been over there to take care of their dogs, like when they run to the store or something to let the dogs out to go to the bathroom. Their dogs have never had an issue with me, even on day one, not really knowing me. There was no issues. The dogs were perfectly fine with me. My kids have gone over there and played with them. My kids are six and nine. And they, I mean, the dogs absolutely love the kids and my kids begged and pleaded to go over there, even though we have our own dogs. But I will say that, you know, I am, you know, looking at a map, if you look at where my location is compared to others surrounding, I am the closest to them. And I also work from home every day. My son just finished up chemo treatment and we did not go anywhere. So I, I never hear the dogs barking. There was like one time and it was honestly because, and I went and said something to Paula and she went out and looked and there was a cat underneath the kennel, so I mean, what do you expect a dog to do when there's a cat in their territory? But she went out, she took care of it, and I've never really had any other issues with them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mavis Hutchings, Mavis Hutchings.
Thank you, Chairman and the Board. This is Mavis Hutchings. I live at one-two-one-four-one Donahue Road. I'm directly south of their house, actually right across the street. I walk the dogs every night. I'm here when I'm not at work. I'm here through the night. I'm here all the weekends. Those are the most quietest dogs I have ever been around. Most dogs, when you walk by on sidewalks, will bark, turn up, act, act crazy. And I literally walked my two golden retrievers right down the road. Their dogs have looked at them. No sound. I mean, I live out in the Ag area and there's other animals out here, but as far as theirs, I've never really heard them. They're real quiet. And if they ever do bark, Paula's already come and talked to us, said, just let us know. We will take care of the issue.
Great, thank you very much, much. Anyone else? I'm sorry. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Again, this case is being heard in conjunction with Bozak twenty-two zero-seven-five, which was denied earlier this evening by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Again, this is special use permit to keep four or more, in this case, six dogs as per UG zoning code. This is in the Prairie Devil, Piper Master Plan area. Before this evening, we received no letters in support, no opposition. There are no notices of violation on this property. Staff recommends approval for two years. One of those conditions of approval, again, is for the Wallaces to apply for a change of zone to R-one. So that they can keep their kennel without the setbacks required in their current R-one YCO zoning district.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Commission, sorry, Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Armstrong, I move that the Kansas City, Kansas Planning and Zoning Commission approve the SP twenty twenty-one dash zero eight-one for two years with the stipulations in the staff report, including the change of zone.
Thank you. Motion was made for approval by Commissioner Armstrong, subject to staff stipulations and comments. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, again, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP eighty-one for two years subject to the conditions in the staff report passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on March second before the Board of County Commissioners at seven PM. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have two items we're gonna hear together and then we'll vote on them separately. Special use permit application SP twenty twenty-two dash zero-nine-zero. Riyadh Baghdadi with RB Architecture Engineering. Special use permit for the expansion of an automotive heavy truck salvage yard at nine nineteen South Twenty-Sixth Street. And Platte twenty twenty-two dash zero-four-one. Final Platte to vacate undeveloped alleyways and streets to create one industrial lot at nine nineteen South Twenty-Sixth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachment stated February thirteen, twenty twenty-three. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot echo for the special use permit and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this case?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baghdadi, are you in the audience or representative representing Mr. Baghdadi? Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Riyadh Baghdadi. I'm with RB Architecture, located at one-one-six-six-one College Boulevard, Overland Park, Kansas, six-six-two-one-zero. The case before you here is to proposal to propose a new building, a new truck repair shop relocated at the property at nine-one-nine South Twenty-Sixth Street. We're proposing about seven thousand square feet of a new building. There is an existing building, a small existing building here. It's gonna be demolished and gonna be replaced by a new building. In addition, we're gonna upgrade the site plan, put in a fence as required and landscaping and circulation and marking for the parking area in there and lighting to, to this. In addition, we're gonna improve the fence along the Twenty-Sixth Street for entrance for trucks and exiting for, for trucks in there. We've been working with the city and we came up with an agreement on the way the building looks in compliance with the regulation for commercial and industrial development.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the public, or excuse me, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case? For or against, please come forward or raise your hand online. I'm seeing no one, so we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Again, this special use permit is being heard in conjunction with Platte- Again, this special use permit is being heard in conjunction with plat twenty twenty two zero four one. We're looking at a heavy truck or, uh, an auto repair facility in the Argentine neighborhood. Uh, this is in the citywide master plan. Again, the applicant is looking to, to consolidate multiple properties over multiple right of ways into a similar type business, but obviously upgraded for, uh, as Mr. Baghdadi just mentioned. You kind of see multiple of the properties here. So we will get additional frontage, uh, and additional sidewalks on twenty sixth street. There's been a couple of projects in this general vicinity that's improved. Landscape buffering, screening and fencing sidewalks and other attributes in this general neighborhood. So it's starting to come together, um, one project at a time. We've received no letters of support, no letters of opposition. There are quite a few old notices of violation on this property for obvious reasons, all are going to be addressed by this project. Step does recommend approval for two years. Again, we mentioned probably the biggest issue here is, is compliance with the commercial design guidelines that we've been working with Mr. Baghdadi on. I would note there was another omission and I apologize in the staff report. This one is also missing the standard condition that says it should be recommended approval for two years.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, stand for a motion when you're ready.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
Do you want the plat or the special use permit first?
Special use permit, please.
Move the, uh, City Planning Commission approves SP two zero two two dash zero nine zero, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you, motion for approval on the plat made by Commissioner Ward, is there a second? I'm sorry, special use permit, excuse me. Is that a second, Commissioner Conley?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, just to clarify, this motion is for approval on the special use permit. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ward.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Straws.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of special use permit ninety for two years, subject to the revised conditions of staff passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, now entertain a motion on the plat.
Commissioner Ward, I move to approve plat two zero two two dash zero four one. Subject to staff stipulations and approval.
Question made to approve the plat by Commissioner Ward, is that a second again, Mr. Conley?
Yes, it's a second.
Thank you. Then move to second for approval on the plat, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ward.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Straws.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve the plat forty one, subject to the revised conditions, passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, your special use permit will be heard once again on March second before the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that takes us to our next special use permit was his SP twenty twenty two dash one one six. Bill Richards with Rothwell Construction. Special use permit to operate a fleet maintenance facility for Frito Lay at eleven oh five South Fifth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated February thirteen, twenty twenty three, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Richards, are you in the audience? Got Alex Calo. Are you representing the applicant in this case?
I am.
Okay, go ahead, please, give us your name and address.
Uh, Alex Calo, I'm, uh, with Thinkle Williams Architecture. And my address is eighty seven eighty seven Renner Boulevard, Suite one hundred in Lenexa.
Okay, go ahead and tell us about your project.
Okay. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, this project is in the industrial area of Fifth Street. Uh, this site was successfully redeveloped in twenty twenty by the owner Premier Investments to create a new distribution facility for Frito Lay, uh, which has been a nice addition to the area. As a second phase of that project, Frito Lay has planned to add a three thousand square foot maintenance facility for light duty repair of their box trucks, uh, on the east side.
Anything else?
That's all at this time.
All right, thank you, any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please raise your hand or come to the microphone. Seeing no one, we'll go to Director Hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Design. This is for a, uh, a special use permit for a repair shop specific to the Frito Lay distribution trucks at its existing distribution center. This is in the Armored Vale area master plan. Armored Vale Air Plant, excuse me, uh, right off the river as noted by the applicant, uh, and, or the applicant's representative. We've received no letters of support, no letters of opposition, no notices of violation. Staff does recommend approval for two years. Conditions of approval are standard. Um, specifically, we just want to note that we are asking that the building meet commercial design guidelines as the original, to match the distribution center. Uh, we're also asking for some enhanced landscaping, um, nothing too much of the ordinary on that one. So again, staff recommends approval for two years.
Thank you, any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, ready for a motion?
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move the City Planning Commission approve special use permit two zero two two dash one one six, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Motion made by Commissioner Ward for approval, is there a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call.
Ward.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Straws.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion recommend approval of special use permit one one six for two years, subject to the staff's conditions passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, this will be heard once again on March second, seven P M before the Board of Commissioners, thank you.
Our next application is special use permit SP twenty twenty two dash one one nine, Alex Elliott with Atlas Land Consulting. Special use permit for dirt removal from one zero seven zero two Donahue Road. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated February thirteen, twenty twenty three, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
And Mr. Rhodes, I've got you queued up to speak because I don't see, um, Mr. Elliott, is that all right?
Yeah, no, he's not, uh, I told him he did not need to show, I could, could handle this.
Okay, go ahead and get, start off with your name and address, please, and then tell us what you'd like to do.
Mike Rhodes, one zero eight zero zero Donahue Road, Kansas City, Kansas. And my, uh, petition is to seek a special use permit for removing soil off of one oh seven oh two Donahue Road, which is right next to where I live. Uh, basically the same property, uh. Anyway, I, I think what happened here, based on the, the staff's comments and suggestions, that when we submitted the, the grading plans and it showed seventy thousand yards available to be removed, uh, they took that as I was gonna move in a, a huge construction company or something and, and have this uh, disturbance ongoing, which, which isn't really, the scope of this project is over the last eight years that I've owned this property, I've had homeowners and landscapers and a couple of contractors uh, ask, uh, if I would, if this soil would be available for them to, to, uh, uh, haul off or whatever used for their projects. I have no contracts in hand, I have nobody that, that actually wants this soil at this time. And so I had mentioned, uh, in my comments that this, this could be up to a ten year project. I may be in here every two years, uh, up and reopen this, you know, they may, they may not even move five hundred yards of soil a year, I, I don't know. But if there is a contractor that comes in and says, hey, look, I need fifteen or twenty thousand yards, uh, there will be a contract in place with all your stipulations in that contract. Uh, obviously, he'd have to have his own bond, his own hauling permits. Uh, but basically, this is for the, the guy that has a little one ton truck or pickup and, or trailer and he brings his loader, I, I don't have any equipment, I'm not going to do this. I will seed it, uh, as needed, uh, but I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna manage this project. I'm not gonna participate in the hauling and excavation of the soil at all. So that said, uh, the staff comments, uh, number five, which is requiring an asphalt paved road with rumple strips and, and all this stuff. They're saying that, uh, this will be a ten year project, but in, in comment, in, in ten, number ten, uh, you can see that I said up to ten years, not that it's gonna be changed. I don't even know if it'll last a year. I don't know if I'll have anybody that wants this soil, tell you the truth. But my goal is to at some point have this huge mound of soil here that's next to my house removed and put into pasture, because right now it's unsightly. Uh, there's a lot of velocity of, of water that comes off that hill. I had to build a berm between that mound and my home, uh, in order for it not to erode, uh, you know, across my, my lawn and everything and to go onto my driveway, so. So removing that, that mound and, and making a nice slope from the north to the south and seeding it with either broom or, or, or fescue, uh, and then, uh, it would either be cut for, for hay or, or I would keep it mowed as I do this, this property, there's a, there's a large pasture, uh, probably three or four acres of this ground that's already graded and it's in pasture. And I keep that mowed, so that's my intent is to just make it, you know, more slightly and, and a nicer piece of property. Uh, I am not charging for this soil. Uh, you know, so to, to go in and start making improvements like roads for, for a pickup to come in here, uh, I don't know, I, I would like to ask if, if that stipulation could be removed. Uh, but like I say, if, if heavy equipment does come in here, uh, I would, uh, either refer to the city as to what, if, if they wanted that company to install a, a drive, a more permanent drive and apron. Uh, but at this point, I, I, I don't see that happening. Uh, so that's the, that's my only, my only concern is that I'm just trying to get, you know, let people come in with, with their trucks or, or landscapers or whoever, and remove this soil. And I can't imagine that there's going to be any disruption on Donahue Road. Uh, since I am not building, uh, you know, a, a building and there's no deadlines, uh, there will no, not be anyone coming in on this property in inclement weather or under wet conditions. So that would take care of a lot of the concerns about running soil or mud out onto Donahue Road. And I understand that I have to have a bond or, or the contractor does anyway to, to keep the road, roadway clean. But I just don't, I, I just don't foresee that issue.
Okay, anything else?
I think that's it.
All right, thank you, I just have one question for you, as far as the tree line uh, between the, between the neighboring neighborhoods, are you going to be getting back that far or removing it?
There, there's a, there's a common area uh, between my north property line and the, and the homes uh, that the, the subdivision had established when it was built. The unfortunate part of it, there's two homes up there, I had my north property line staked about a month ago. And, and the unfortunate thing is there's two homes up there that actually, they cleared that area and they actually cleared, clear onto my property. And then they built a shed on my property. And, uh, apparently that gentleman has moved, but he's left all the debris and everything, uh, still up there on my property and, and, uh, so there is no trees right there where all that was going on and they, they cut some trees out for a, a, a walking path through the woods, which, which came in on my property. Uh, so yeah, I'm gonna go up to the property line eventually, but, but that, I, I don't know that I'm ever gonna get up there. I mean, there's seventy thousand yards of dirt there, I, I don't, I don't know who would even want that much dirt. So I, I don't foresee myself getting that far up in there, but like I say, if, if, if there's a contractor that comes in here and wants all that soil, uh, I obviously will have a contract with them so that they will, and they'll have to pay for all the seeding, the tree removal, uh, everything, get their own bond, their hauling permits. But at this point, I'm just looking at little pickups and stuff coming in here and, and getting soil for their, you know, whatever their project is.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, seeing none, we'll go to the audience, anyone in the audience that wants to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request, please raise your hand or come to the mic. Seeing none, we'll close and we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Uh, again, this case is a special use permit for effectively making this property a borrowed site, uh, for, for future, um, dirt, this is in the Prairie Delaware Piper Master Plan area. To date, we receive no letters of support, no letters of opposition, and there are no notices of violation on the property. Staff does recommend approval of two years with, uh, conditions, uh, some previously mentioned by the applicant and which time I'll address now. Uh, these are pretty much the standard dust mitigation measures that we have on any sort of operation that could potentially kick up dust or bring debris out onto the public right of way. The current driveway off Donahue already tracks, um, debris and gravel onto the, onto the public right of way. The requirement to add a improved surface for that driveway apron and then add a rubble strip on top of that is no extra, is no different than our requirement to have a U G standard driveway in any of the applications we've heard this evening. Um, we're simply, there is no curb on this little stretch of Donahue, so what would be allowed would be an asphalt driveway apron up to the public right of way and then adding a rubble strip behind it. So that as people come to the site ad hoc, there is some maintenance that prevents the off tracking of dirt and, and gravel that already occurs at this location. Additionally, I just want to double down that it is a code requirement, it's also a condition of approval that the a hundred feet from the northern property line essentially, um, so you know, like ish, not directly up to the tree line, but pretty much ten, fifteen, twenty feet into the tree line is the farther northernmost extent we would allow for any grading activity, whether it be small scale or in the future large scale. And then, of course, there's conditions of approval in there to restore the site once the activity is completed. Uh, so staff does recommend approval for, for two years with those conditions as noted, we recommend keep them all.
All right, thank you, questions for Director Hand?
I do.
Commissioner Ward?
As Mr. Rhodes stated, he's, nothing's imminent and nothing's gonna happen as, as far as he knows and nothing, no contract has been signed to do anything that he's been talking about tonight. As Mr. Rose stated, he's, nothing's imminent and nothing's gonna happen as, as far as he knows and nothing, no contract has been signed to do anything that he's been talking about tonight. If he, if we were to approve this special use permit for him tonight, but then he doesn't follow through on what you're asking for, what happens?
Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning, I'm sorry. If, if it's approved this evening and then approved by the Board of Commissioners on March second, in two years' time, this special use permit will have to get renewed if it is comes back for renewal in that two-year time and none of the conditions of approval have been met, staff would recommend denial of any expansion of that special use permit.
So we're gonna wait two years and see what, see what happens? Is that what we're talking about basically?
Yep.
Okay. So any of the measures you talked about, there would be, it would be two years to implement those or would they have to be this, at the six months that you?
No, they're all the standard six months, but with S U Ps and with our limited resources, we've had this conversation a little bit, but just to go into it real quickly. So with the addition of a second zoning enforcement officer in the last year, we're training that person up right now so that they can do most of the sort of uh responses to zoning enforcement actions. With the intent that it frees up the existing zoning enforcement officer to focus more on the other tasks that, that zoning enforcement officer has been charged with that aren't really zoning enforcement inspections, certificates of occupancy, um, real important parts of the development process, quite frankly. Um, but the task we would add to that zoning enforcement officer would be to proactively go back to conditions of approval in the past years. Um, you know, giving ever, so like uh, we would look, we would, we hope to start looking at twenty twenty-two approvals in June twenty twenty-three so that all of them have it gotten at least that six months to do what they need to do. And then proactively going back to those sites and making sure that they um are doing the conditions we said that, that they said that they would do and if not following through with zoning enforcement cases. The one exception to that would be special use permits because we know those will eventually come back to us or they will go away on the, on their own, right? And so um it's a ban, did you?
All right, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
Move City Planning Commission, approve special use permit two zero two two dash one one nine, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Motion made for approval by Commissioner Ward with all staff stipulations included in the staff comments. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Indeed, as long as he makes a motion in that form, I will follow him to the end of the earth.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded for approval as presented by the director. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ward?
Hi.
Armstrong?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Conley?
Hi.
Ernst?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Straws?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of S P one nineteen for two years subject to the staff's condition passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again, March second at seven P M before the Board of Commissioners.
Our next special use permit is S P twenty twenty-two dash one two three, family fit. Special use permit for an event space at nineteen fifty-seven North Sixty-third Drive. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated February thirteen, twenty twenty-three. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the windup echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you, are you the applicant? Please go ahead and come to the microphone. And go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
All right, uh, my name is Polly. My address is twenty-one hundred North Sixty-seventh Street.
Okay, and Polly, what's your last name?
Lee.
Lee, okay, thank you.
My name is Amelia Interiano. My address is five zero two two Harmony Drive, Kansas City, Kansas.
Okay, and why don't you tell us what you'd like to do?
All right, so we want to supplement the income from it. So we want to rent it out on the weekends for an event space or event center. Uh, small parties. We have a occupancy level of sixty-one people right now, so it'd be just a small family gathering, birthday parties, uh, meetings. Currently during the week, we use it as a fitness center and and we just wanna help other people, you know, could.
Okay, so you rent, you lease the space now, correct? As a fitness center and you want to open it up to a, a, a small event space?
Yes, yes, for the weekends when we're closed.
Okay, and we, is, is alcohol gonna be served at any of these events or?
We will not be serving alcohol. Now, we will permit them to bring their own alcohol if they would like. Uh, I mean, according to the Kansas law and everything.
Okay.
But we will not be serving ours.
And you said your capacity is sixty-one?
Yes.
Okay, any kind of security on site for these events?
Uh, if they say that they will bring alcohol, we will provide security.
And, and what type of measures are in place to, to find out whether they do or not? Are you gonna be there to let them in and police the?
We have, we will install wireless cameras.
Okay.
Inside the event space and outside.
But does somebody meet them or do you just give them a key or?
We meet them the day of the, so we would be renting out just Saturdays and Sundays. So we would meet them that Saturday and we'd get the key returned back that Saturday night.
Okay, so you, you are responsible for locking up?
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor of or in opposition to? Raise your hand or come to the mic. Well, it's just us here, so that won't include anybody. So anybody online? Seeing now, we'll go to Director Hannigan, get his thoughts.
Name is Chair, this is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Again, this is a foreign event space. Uh, special use permit for an event space. This is uh in the citywide master plan area, kind of in the north midtown um neighborhood. It's an existing um retail strip center, uh, one of the units in the existing retail strip center right off Parallel Parkway. Um, we've received no letters of support. We did receive one letter in opposition from an adjacent tenant and there are no notices of violation related to this uh, related to this uh property. Uh, staff does recommend approval of one year um as a trial run, if you will, not the typical two years based on the uh complaint of adjacent um uh tenant. We do apply all this uh regular safety standard conditions as it relates to security and lighting and parking and all that stuff as um for this use as we do for all event spaces.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? Mr. Connolly?
Yeah, Director Hand, I mean, is um, I didn't see what you was requiring an I D scanner?
Yeah, we're not, there, this is for small parties. This isn't like a, like live music or live events. So we do have different variant, variations of standard conditions based on what these, what the event space is geared toward. So they're not having, they're not selling, they're not subleasing this to have like a concert or a venue or anything like that. It's a, it's one party at a time, if you will. So for that reason, there's no I D scanner.
So they don't, they can have live music?
No, they can have live, no, again, there's different classifications and different standards for different um event spaces. This is an event space where you rent it out altogether um and to a party. If it were an event space that is hosting like music, like at a bar, then those are the ones where we apply a standard condition to check people's I Ds. So this one is just having a security agent on site at all time, basically.
Okay, I mean, they have a, alcohol there, right?
Again, they're proposing that the people who rent the space out can bring their own alcohol. Um, and again, it's different than a bar that has events because they charge at the door and that's where you do the I D scanner and they're selling alcohol at that bar. So there's a difference between this type of event space and then, and that type of event space.
Now, I mean, um, I mean, prior to you coming, there was someone that had an event base. Um, and there was an I D card scanner required. So that's why I'm asking you the question. So you saying that uh you're no longer doing that? What's going on? I'm trying to figure that out.
No, what, what I'm saying is for this specific use, this specific type of um event space, we've differentiated between, let me stop there. In the last couple of years, we've looked at the different types of event space. A jukebox, a bar with a band or a cover or D Js or in this case uh an open hall that they want to rent out for special party um versus a special use permit for a memorial hall, for instance. These are all different size scales and types of event spaces, whereas previously the code looked at all of them the same. We tried to differentiate between uh those different uses and the types of security requirements based on their size and type. So for this type of event space, we have different standards as it relates to security than an event space where somebody charges at the door.
Okay, uh, I guess, could you give me a copy of what's the sizes and what's the requirements on each event space? And after, and send it to me sometime next week? Is that okay?
Sure, that's no problem. Again, these things aren't in the code. These are staff's standard conditions as we apply to the different scenarios. So we have some text, but yes, we can send that to you.
Yeah, I just, I just like for it to be put in writing. Uh, prior to you coming, I mean, we had some different uh venues treated differently. And if I, I'm assuming if it was put in writing, we would definitely have some type of a standards where uh that we couldn't be perceived as some type of bias. All right?
Yep, we can send that to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Beth?
Yeah, Gunnar, could you tell me what the one opposition letter, what the, what the reason for opposing it was?
Staff talked to an adjacent tenant who said that they're already using the space for party rentals and that's the last event they had there. Trashed the strip retail. There's a lot of trash and other stuff around there. So again, standard conditions are that the property owner is responsible for cleanup. Um, because this is like a supplemental income. It's not their primary business, but even if it was, quite frankly, they would be responsible for all the cleanup. Often they put the onus on the renters to do the cleanup, but that rarely happens. Um, depending on what kind of uh party it is. Uh, but again, we got concerns from the neighborhood and so our, our thought was to give them a trial run of one year and see if it worked, see if they manage it appropriately and they come back in a year. If there's additional complaints, we can address them then.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion.
Commissioner Ward?
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move the City Planning Commission, approve special use permit two zero two two dash one two three, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
That's for one year, correct?
One year.
Thank you. Motion made for one year approval by Commissioner Ward. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call?
Ward?
Hi.
Armstrong?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Conley?
Hi.
Ernst?
Hi.
Miller?
Um.
Straws?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of special use permit one two three for one year, subject to the staff's conditions passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard one more time, March second, seven P M before the Board of Commissioners. Okay? Thank you. Good luck.
Our next application is Platte twenty twenty-two dash zero four three. Scott Brewer with United Methodist Church, preliminary and final platte to split one residential parcel into two parcels at ten twenty South Seventy-eighth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated February thirteen, twenty twenty-three. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notices to property owners and the testimony at the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting earlier this evening. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant here, is Ms. Reader, I believe that's you. I've got you queued up, ready to go. Ms. Reader, I just need you to unmute yourself.
I'm sorry, that better?
All right.
Thank you so much. My name is Patricia Reader. My address is fifty-six eleven Southwest Barrington Court South, Topeka, Kansas. I represent the Great Plains Annual Conference of the United Methodist Church. And Scott Brewer is the Director of Great Plains, the applicant. Um, applicant's petition is for a preliminary and final platte for subdivision of the three point seven six acre parcel at seventy-eight nineteen Schwartz Road and ten twenty South Seventy-eighth Street from one parcel which contains, which has a closed church with adjoining church cemetery and a uh, an occupied residence which used to be the parsonage. So the, it's for requesting subdivision of that one parcel into two residentially zoned parcels. Separate single family residential parcel which would have the closed church and the church cemeteries and a separate second parcel which would contain the existing single family residence. It would be practical to do so. Um, these would allow for better development in the future because of the separate uses of the property now that the church is closed. And uh, this would provide for long-term sustained real estate values.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Name is Chair, Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Design. This case was served in conjunction with both the twenty twenty-two zero six eight, which was approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals earlier this evening. Again, as the applicant mentioned, we're taking a single parcel and splitting off the single family home from the church. This is in the citywide master plan area, kind of a south men town, close to the Kansas River area. Uh, we've received no letters of support, excuse me, no letters in opposition. There are some older notices of violation on this property, but related to the, um, related to the church, uh, but, excuse me, but um on uh site inspection from staff, we didn't see any of those and most of them have been closed down already. Uh, we do recommend approval with one condition that the driveway apron of the um single family home be uh um not upgraded, but um resurfaced to U G standards.
And thank you. Questions for staff? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward?
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move the City Planning Commission, approve Platte two zero two two dash zero four three, subject to staff stipulation and comments. And also with the updated condition of the uh driveway apron.
All right, thank you. Motion made for approval by Commissioner Ward. Is there a second?
Commissioner Armstrong, I second.
Commissioner Armstrong has the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Ward?
Hi.
Armstrong?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Conley? Mr. Conley?
Hold on. Hi.
Ernst?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Straws?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve Platte forty-three subject to the staff's conditions passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we're gonna hear two items together and then we'll vote on them separately. Platte twenty twenty-two dash zero four four, Eric Gentry with Victory Jeep. Final platte Legends Auto Plaza fourth platte for one commercial lot. And plan review application, P R twenty twenty-two dash zero five two, Eric Gentry with Victory Jeep. Preliminary and final plan review for Victory Jeep at seventeen oh one North One Hundred Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted- The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated February thirteen, twenty twenty-three, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Gentry, are you in the audience? Eric Gentry. Okay, I don't see anyone, Gunner.
This is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Again, this is, we're hearing both plat twenty twenty-two zero four two, excuse me, and plan review twenty zero two, twenty twenty-two dash zero five two. This is for a new Victory Jeep dealership to be pulled out of a combined dealership, um, out at the edge and, uh, excuse me, Legends Auto Plaza. If you recall, uh, a few months ago, you heard and approved the preliminary plan review for this same dealership. It has since grown and it has met the thresholds where it has to come back and be reheared as a preliminary and final plan review. So that's a good thing. Dealer shop got bigger. I guess we're selling more cars, more sales tax dollars. This is in the Prairie Delaware Piper Master Plan area, again, right there, um, in the Legends Auto Plaza, if you're familiar, between parallel and state of, uh, just off four thirty-five. We've received no letters of support, no letters of opposition. There are no notices of violation on this property. Staff recommends approval, um, in compliance with the commercial, both the commercial design guidelines and the Legends Auto Plaza design guidelines.
Thank you. Any questions for the director? Seeing none, we'll need two motions. The first on the plan review, Janet?
Uh, the first one, could we please take the plat?
All right. So first motion would be on the plat if you're so inclined.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move the city planning commission approve plat two zero two two dash zero four four, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion is made to approve the plat by Commissioner Ward. Is there a second?
Commissioner Armstrong, I'll second.
Commissioner Armstrong has a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ward.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Straws.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve plat forty-four, subject to the staff's conditions passes, seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. And now the plan review?
Yes, sir. Move to approve plan review, sorry, city planning commission moved to approve the plan review two zero two two dash zero five two, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Motion made to approve the plan review application by Commissioner Ward. Is there a second?
Commissioner Armstrong, I'll second.
Commissioner Armstrong has the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ward.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Straws.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of plan review fifty-two, subject to the staff's conditions passes, seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the plan review will go to the Board of Commissioners.
Yes, I'm sorry, I have that down. Plan review will go to the Board of Commissioners on March 2nd at 7:00 PM. Sorry, I have a, an applicant, or excuse me, an attendee, as their hand up, Brian?
Yes, uh, quick comment on the architect on the project. Uh, there were some comments related to the front facade of the building and the amount of masonry required. And we're asking, uh, for a, uh, you to approve. We're not, we're using a high-end metal panel and glass with a more modern look. And we're hoping to get that approved.
Says something for us to take up tonight, Gunner, or is that something you work with you?
This is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. As the keeper of all design guidelines, you have to approve.
Is that a deviation from anything that we just approved?
Uh, it would be, yes.
But we've already got a, we've already got a, an approved plan review.
Yep.
Let's recommend it for approval.
Okay.
So, Mr. Legal Counsel, I believe that if the commission wants to, uh, consider this, they would have to move to reconsider their recommendation, correct?
Yes, I, I agree. And I think that, I think that could be made. Commissioner Miller?
I was just gonna say, uh, Patrick, isn't it? Basically, I would just make a motion that having voted on the prevailing side, we would reconsider something.
Yes.
Is that, I mean, my understanding is that's what staff wants us to do, right? Cause if so, I'll make that motion.
Well, he's still looking at a notebook. Is that what, if we're gonna take it up, we're gonna have to have a motion to reconsider.
The condition of approval.
It's always been through. So.
We're waiting on a, I'm getting a clarification, Commissioner Conley, just one second.
So, as it currently stands and approved, there's a condition of approval where they say that the first one, it says they're gonna do a hundred percent metal paneling, but we're recommending that they install a four-foot Wayne Scott masonry plan. So that is a compromise that I don't think is reflected in the, um, elevations. So that's what's been approved. If you don't want to do the masonry ban.
But your recommendation is to have the masonry Wayne Scott.
We basically transferred over to the exact same, um, deviation that was approved in the original preliminary plan, then that's what this reflects. So if the architect wants to do something different, which is what I heard him say, then what we already agreed upon when we were doing draft staff reports and other things, then, then that would be different. So if they want to do different than what one says right now, I defer to you if you want to hear that.
What's done on the current dealership? Were we approved?
The current dealership?
I mean, this is.
Oh, I have to double check. I don't know.
This is a deviation from what?
It met the same design guidelines. My gut would tell me that, no, you did not give that one a deviation because his materials have changed since that dealership was created. They've, they've moved on to a lot. There's been a lot more recent people wanting to do high-end architectural metal panel.
All right. What's, what's the pleasure of the commission? What's the pleasure of the commission? This is already been approved. The only way to, to do anything different would be a motion to reconsider. Is there, is there one?
I mean, I would ask the architect if they want to do anything different than what's in that condition.
Well, I'm assuming that's the, that's the reason you're hand of. Is that correct? First of all, Brian, what is your name?
Uh, Brian Falk, Falk Architects.
Brian Paul.
Falk, F-A-L-K.
F-A-L-K, okay. And are you requesting something that's, that's different than what, what was approved a minute ago?
Yeah, we, we're requesting what's in, what we showed in our construction documents, uh, which is a deviation from the standards. However, there is, um, several buildings nearby that, that have similar qualities that have been approved in the past. And so we're, we're asking that you, uh, consider it the same way that you, for instance, the dairy farmers of American Building, it'll have a similar effect as that building. That's a more modern way of designing a building.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I don't mean to interrupt, but, um, unless I'm wrong, legal counsel, we've disposed of this application.
I know. I'm trying, I'm not discussing it. I'm trying to get to the bottom of if there's a request or not. So I need to do that before I can decide, before I can determine whether or not there needs to be a motion to reconsider. So there is a design request that is not part of the application that was approved. That I just found out. So as a result, no discussion. Is there a, a desire to reconsider this case? If so, I need a motion to reconsider. If there is not one, we're moving on. Commissioner Conley.
I guess, I mean, it's been approved. I don't think that that we can go back and, and redo something that we already approved.
Yes, we can with a motion to reconsider, but I'm not seeing one. We don't get one. We're not going back.
I mean, I mean, how can you make a motion after something's been approved? That's just like.
We just explained it. It was a motion to reconsider. There has not been one. So at this point, we're not going back. Unless I get one.
I don't think you can have a motion to reconsider. Where you see that at?
I just talked to legal counsel. So.
There's no motion for reconsidering.
Yeah, so what we generally do, if this is not specifically laid out in our bylaws, which I don't believe it's in our bylaws, we look to the commission rules and the commission rules say that, um, in order that a motion previously passed may be placed for the commission for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider shall be in order, providing that such motion to reconsider is made by a member of the side prevailing on the vote of the original motion, providing that any member may second a motion to reconsider. And it must be made during the same meeting that the, the original motion was passed. And, um, so.
That's where we're at. I mean, it has to be done tonight or the other option, of course, is, I'm sorry, we said, Mr. Gunner, you're saying this does go to full commission or?
Yes, cause.
Okay. So the other option is that obviously they, they take it off and argue their case to full commission.
Correct. All right. I am not seeing a motion to reconsider. So this case will go forward to the Board of County Commissioners on March 2nd at 7:00 PM as it was approved earlier. Next case.
Thank you. Master plan amendment, MPL twenty twenty-two dash zero two nine, Josh Buerlin, master plan amendment from Low Disney Residential to Neighborhood Commercial Citywide Master Plan to expand the operation of a speech therapy clinic at eighty-two forty-seven Leavenworth Road. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachment stated February thirteen, twenty twenty-three, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind on echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
Oh.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Go ahead and give us your name and address.
My name is Josh Berlin. My address is nineteen five three seven one hundred and seventy-fourth street in Tonganoxie, Kansas. My wife and I own the communication station, speech therapy clinic at eight two four seven Leavenworth Road. We came before you in December for a preliminary plan review and a final plan review. Those were approved. As part of that, it was also noted that we needed to seek a master plan amendment based on the fact that the property is currently low-density residential and it would need to be neighborhood commercial in order for us to add the additional building that we're looking to add. The business has grown from when we opened it in twenty seventeen. Uh, we bought what was a, previously a small insurance office there and two offices at the time were plenty. Uh, we're seeing significantly more clients now. And so we're adding a nine hundred and fifty square foot building that'll have four offices, basically doubling the capacity to see folks from all ages from the community for speech therapy. So I, I believe that since we've already been operating this way and previously it was an insurance office, that the neighborhood commercial is reflective of uh, kind of what this property can be and can be successful as. And so that's why we are seeking the change this evening.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor of or in opposition to? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand. Get staff comment.
Name is Chair Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. As the applicant mentioned, this case is a condition of approval of plan review twenty twenty-two zero three two that was approved by the Board of Commissioners last year. This is in the, um, citywide master plan area in the north midtown, pretty almost closed, almost across the street, in fact, to the Prairie Delaware Piper Master Plan area. We received no letters of support, no letters of opposition. There are no notices of violation on this property. Again, staff recommends approval, doubling down on our previous conditions of approval for the plan review, that the future expansions must meet the commercial design guidelines.
Thank you. Questions for Director Hand? Seeing none. Is there a motion?
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move the city planning commission approve master plan uh, two zero two two dash zero two nine, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Ward for approval of this case. Is there a second?
Commissioner Armstrong, I'll second.
Commissioner Armstrong, second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ward.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Straws.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of master plan amendment twenty-nine, subject to the conditions and the staff report passes, seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on March 2nd at 7:00 PM before the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have one item, um, that is left on the agenda. Um, I see a couple of applicants, one that his item was on the consent agenda, um, do we want to do anything about that or just move on?
At this point, all cases have been heard for both the Board of Zoning Appeals and the City Planning Commission. You all are welcome to stay online as we hear our last presentation on short-term rentals, uh, but all cases have been heard for the evening. Thank you. And so is, Gunner, are you gonna be presenting or is that, is that Mr. Farley?
Yes.
I wasn't sure if that was you or Mr. Austin Butler from the movie Elvis, uh, because of the hair, but, uh, I was able to identify you. Okay, so who's going to be presented?
I'm gonna do a quick intro and then pass the mic to Mr. Farley.
Okay, I believe Mr. Farley's blushing, but that's okay.
Matching his coat.
Go ahead, please.
All right, thank you. Again, Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design, just as a quick intro before Mr. Farley goes into greater detail about our proposed short-term rental ordinance. I'm gonna admit that to the zoning code. Um, I just wanted to say that there's been a lot of research over the last six to nine months that we've been doing on this project. We've mentioned a couple of, uh, updates to you all in that, in that term. We've done everything from research case studies to join the regional working group, um, in the Kansas City metropolitan area that's also addressing short-term rentals in multiple jurisdictions, done interviews with some of our own short-term rental owners and operators, uh, had multiple community meetings. We believe this reflects the streamlining of the process by making it a dual application process for both administrative and continuing on in certain circumstances with the special use permit process, creating triggers between the two, um, for bad actors. Basically, we're looking at a density, um, sorry, basically, we're looking at a density of one, um, special use permit, uh, short-term rental per block. Again, Mr. Farley, we'll go into greater detail of that, but that was what we saw to be the most equitable, fair and, um, correct, maximum density of short-term rentals um, in a, in a very diverse geographic area. This might not represent the most perfect ordinance, but it's the ordinance that's right for us right now that we can enforce today. Excuse me. It also, we believe, strikes the balance, the correct balance between allowing for private reinvestment and rehabilitation as the vast majority of our short-term rentals are single-family homes while also maintaining neighborhood character. The Administrative Human Services Standing Committee of the Board of Commissioners heard this presentation this, uh, earlier this evening. Excuse me, which is why I wasn't here at the beginning of the Board of Zoning Appeals. They have chosen to hold over this item until next month. For those of you who don't know, H and S Standing Committee usually happens at the end of the month. So we were hoping this month we would come here, then go there, then potentially land at the Board of Commissioners Planning and Zoning on March 2nd. Didn't work out that way for schedules. They had some additional questions, so they deferred a month. So after, if there are any comments here, we will take those back to a draft ordinance or revise potentially draft ordinance at H and S next month. If we need to come back here, we will. All that is to say that this is a first go. It'll probably come back here, uh, again in March with a truncated presentation, just updating you if there's been any changes. But again, staff, uh, with that, staff does recommend approval. Um, we did have some, since the version that you have been given in your packets, we did one last son of, uh, review of it, caught a couple typos, sorry. Noticed we need to do one small clarification in one of our definitions, nothing substantive. And then we also forgot to add some standards, some codify some existing standards that we do already for all of our short-term rental special use permits that we just forgot to put into the ordinance. So that one is substantial, but it's not different than anything we already done. So we don't really feel like we need to. Address those. So we would recommend approval of this ordinance with those changes that we've already sort of gone back and made and we can point those out if you need to. Otherwise. I'll hand it off to Mister Mike Farley to give a presentation. We'll take questions afterwards.
Thank you, Director Hand, and uh thank you to the Planning Commission for uh having me tonight and for anyone else that's that's still on the call. Uh, we jump to the next slide. So real quick, I know we're all probably aware of uh short term rentals in our community. Uh, if you want to go through a brief history of sort of. Where short terminals come from and where we're at right now. Uh, I do want to start off saying that. As we define short term rentals for, you know, a a lease or a rental in a house of thirty days or less, that's something that we. We've seen, you know, throughout the history of Kansas City, frankly, you know, throughout the history of of urban environments. Uh, people are, you know, always using. You know, the the back bedroom in their home or um, you know, little. Space out back or something like that, you know, maybe they're called boarding houses or granny flats or something like that. But this is, it's something that. Has happened throughout time. Um, but only in the last couple of years has it really taken off with the rise of third party platforms like Airbnb and VRBO and Homestay. Uh, that's made it a lot easier for. The average person who may not want to, you know, go out and put out advertisements in the newspaper and seek out people to, you know, come stay for, you know, small rent or something like that. Uh, it's it allows them to to advertise through a third party platform who handles the payments, who can attract people. Uh, from halfway across the country or halfway across the world that are coming to Kansas City for a set amount of time. Uh, while that is great. It is also, um, you know, the use of the internet and use of private homes make it a very private transaction. Um, that is difficult for a local government to regulate. It's it's people, you know. Posting online, someone else is coming in. These houses are not distinguishable from any other property. It's not a storefront. It is a little harder for us to track. Um, and to regulate. And so we hope that these updated ordinances uh will will help address the both the problems. Um, associated with short term rentals as well as the benefits that they can bring. Um, so all that to say is this was developing over the last several years. Uh, it was only in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen that. Uh, the unified government. Uh, really addressed um how short term rentals are regulated within zoning code and granted amnesty period for. Property owners to uh come and apply for a special use permit. And to this day, the special use permit is the only mechanism under which short term rental can operate. Uh, in the last couple of years, we've we've used a program such as host host compliance, uh, which helped with address that internet aspect of the short term rentals. Um. The host compliance uh program or your company goes out and, you know, scrapes data from all these third party platforms, um, you know, showing the pictures and the advertising and. You know, use it geo-locates it and, you know, other stuff. I'm not really sure how it basically identifies uh that, you know, these are within, these are short term rentals being advertised within the county and then. Um, gives us, you know, the numbers and, you know, roughly where they are and things like that. And we'll see um some of those graphs and maps in a little bit. Uh, but that started in twenty nineteen, so we've been tracking that for a couple of years. We've also made steps towards. Um, changing the special use permit process and the in the application for short term rail specifically in order to streamline um the. Conditions of approval that we typically see associated with short term rentals um and to get a better idea of of what actually. Is being in how short terminals are being entailed within our county specifically. Uh, I mean, the last, you know, last couple of months, we've just been doing review and and uh doing presentations of them a handful of times and. Uh, getting up with the with the community and and in community input, which we'll talk about as well. So as I mentioned, the special use permit right now is the. The only way that um someone can operate a short term rental. Uh, in compliance with the zoning code. Uh, already and since since the beginning of of use of the special use permits, the. Planning Department has made distinction between owner occupied and non owner occupied properties. And that's something that we will continue to make a distinction on and and actually enhance the distinction even more as we'll talk about the code. Uh, currently, a owner occupied property can get a short term. Uh, especially experiment for short term rental, um, starting at two years and then upon renewal can get up to five and up to ten, of course. Subject to the the recommendation of the planning commission and ultimately the approval of the Board of Commissioners. Um. Similarly, non owner occupied properties uh follow a similar route, but they start off at a one year application and then go to five, ten as well. Uh, again, giving a little preference to an owner occupied property that um. That, you know, all speed equal, this is has a greater chance of being self policing and uh probably going to have less issues with with noise or parking or thing or. Or if they do, it can be, you know, addressed quickly uh with the neighbors by the actual property on themselves in ways that not owner occupied properties just simply can't. So as I talked about before, um, host compliance, Granicus uh is the the company that we use to to track. Short term routes or at least to scrape the internet to on these different platforms to find this. Um, so they provide. Charts like this that basically showed the rise in short term rentals over the past year or so. Um, they also do identify uh fairly accurately how many short term rentals are probably within Y dot county. So as of. January twenty fourth, the number that we had was one hundred and seventy eight. It fluctuates a little bit, but that's probably pretty consistent today if we were to pull that up. Another thing that hasn't really changed is the the number of. Active short term rental, uh, special use permits that we have. It is approximately fifty, uh, which gives us an idea that, you know, there's maybe thirty percent compliance. Of all the suspected and identified short term rentals within the county. Um, again, some of those could be in Edwardsville or Bronder Springs, but most, the vast majority of them are going to be within Kansas City, Kansas. That's that. Okay, no, we're good. And so we can decide. Uh, another thing that we've. That we've noticed and it doesn't take a map to show this is there has been a concentration of short term rentals in primarily two neighborhoods within the U G. Uh, Strawberry Hills right over here and then as well as Rosedale on the southeast corner of the county. Uh, these high concentrations. Uh, basically, I mean, we try to, we're trying to address those in the code as well. Uh, as Director Hand mentioned before, uh, by placing. Uh, per block limits, and I can sort of explain more of what that is when we when we get to that, but the idea is that want to. Uh, address areas where there's high levels of concentration and instead balance out. Uh, the use of of short term rentals along with, you know, a mix of long term rentals and and, you know, owner occupied properties as well. Uh, we've also been doing outreach uh and mentioned Rosedale and Strawberry Hill specifically, and when I um give this presentation or a similar one to both of their respective neighborhood groups. Um, additionally, we presented to the. A couple of neighborhood groups as well as labor, the livable neighborhoods task force. And doing so also did research with uh reviews of pure cities and the short term rental ordinances that they currently have. Uh, we did. Uh, pretty, we had planners do a pretty extensive review of um. Other municipalities within the Kansas City metro area and then review as well of of uh in, you know. Other interesting cities that came up in our research throughout the U S. So we kind of, we kind of got a nice little smattering there. Trying to see what worked best for everyone, sees of different sizes and and, you know, levels of tourism and other considerations. Um, and so speaking of considerations, there are several things that that want to kind of have this through lines throughout both this presentation, and I hope you see it throughout the. The ordinance itself. Uh, there really are a lot of balances that we need to strike with this ordinance. The first is addressing tendency models. As I mentioned before, we do want to have a mix of owner occupied properties, long term rentals and short term rentals throughout the county. Whatever that balance is, um, you know, we try to do something that. Maintains character of the neighborhood and allows for people to feel ownership of their communities, but also brings in outside dollars um and helps revitalize blighted areas. Uh, I also want to address enforcement. Um, enforcement, while it is great, it should be a last measure. It should not be our primary method of enforcement, uh, excuse me, our primary method of compliance. Um, and simply due to the fact that we have limited resources within the planning department and with the U G at whole in whole. Uh, enforcement is important tool. We think that rewriting the code to allow for greater compliance, especially with owner occupied properties. Will be a much better way of allocating those limited resources to the properties that really have those issues. Uh, I mentioned previously about neighborhoods. Again, we were focusing on incremental change, so no big shockwaves in the community. Some uh neighborhoods might even see less. Short term rentals in the community as a result of this uh ordinance. And uh striking that balance between allowing property owners to, uh, you know, supplement income through, you know, renting out additional bedrooms that they're not using or. Um, in accessory dwelling unit in the backyard, uh, allowing them to do that while at the same time making sure that their. The character of the neighborhood is relatively maintained and that neighbors are given proper notice and input when necessary. And lastly, addressing economic development within the community, we have noticed. That um a lot of short term rentals uh were, you know, previously vacant houses that were bought up and, you know, and flipped and. Uh, you know, turned in, turned in short term rentals. Uh. You know, there's, there's pros and cons to that, but but one of the things that we noticed is that that really does. Uh, address, you know, maybe that vacant property on the block, maybe it's a blighted, you know, entire blighted block that's uh that's being revitalized through this. So making sure that we can, we can leverage the short term rentals. To help with our community, but also making sure that we're promoting local investment and that we're not displacing uh current. Owners either, you know, physically or due to, you know, due to taxes or change in neighborhood or anything like that, uh, striking that balance. Uh, where we can all enjoy, enjoy our property, enjoy our community. So all that being said, we are taking staff expertise, the best practices that we've uh. And that we've seen in other cities, uh, looking at pure city comparisons, getting community input. Um, getting getting feedback from uh standing committee commissions and and other uh affected unified government departments. And all of that put together, uh, we're creating an ordinance that we hope will establish what we call an owner occupied, owner occupancy centric model. Um, to toward short term rentals based on building, both building typology and the zoning districts in which those buildings lie in. So without further ado, we can talk about what changes are actually happening. After all that, as mentioned before, short term rentals um are limited to rentals for thirty days or less. So this can be anything from people coming in next season to watch our Super Bowl champion Chiefs all the way to a. Traveling nurse who's at the K U Medical Center that's there for a four week stint. That's twenty eight days. That's still considered a short term rental under our definition and needs to be addressed as such. Uh, we are identifying exactly who the homeowner is. And again, that's important when we get into what we, uh, the owner occupied and active owner occupied definitions uh next to that. So making sure that. The person residing at the property, even if it's owned by a trust or something, really distilling down and identifying a single individual that's living there. Uh, or individuals that are living there, that can be kind of be the basis for owner occupancy. Uh, I did, I keep using the term owner occupation, owner occupancy. I mentioned active owner occupation. There is a distinction there. Uh, basically owner occupied means you're living in your home, but you could go away for two weeks, rent out your property while you're gone. So you're not physically there. But obviously, it's your home. We still think that there's a level of self policing there. Actively owner occupied means you're renting out a bathroom, renting out your eight, your accessory dwelling unit in the backyard. You're still living at the house or there most of the time, you know, maybe you can come and go for a weekend, but as long as you're there for half the time that a short term tenant is there. That's considered actively owner occupied, and we will make distinctions in the code about how each of those are addressed. And then lastly itself, um, defining what a block is in this case to address concentrations of short term rentals, a block would be all properties on both sides of one street. Bisected, you know, by intersections on each side of wherever a name change is. So very distinct segments. That would be considered a block, um, even out in the, you know, certain areas where the roads meander a little bit. If there's a name change, that's where the block ends. So we tried to. Segment up the entire county and it wasn't easy, and that's why we have three different. Uh, three different conditions there. We want to segment segment up the entire county as blocks so that there could be, as Director Hand mentioned. One um, one non actively owner occupied property per block that could also get an administrative review. I think. And yes, well, what's an administrative review? We haven't, we haven't talked about that yet. Administrative review uh would be considered an expedited process that'd be focused on actively owner occupied properties. This would be simply be a form that someone could turn in. And say, I'd like to do a short term rental. We'd ensure that they have a, you know. Get their proper business license. Um, you know, fill out a couple more questions, ensure residency uh or residing at the property, I should say. And um, simply put, then someone could, you know, start. Advertising on Airbnb and uh, you know, renting out the accessory dwelling unit above their garage. Now, we do want to make sure that, you know. If there's issues with the property, um. If there's an open zoning or uh or property maintenance compliance citation on the property, those are things that you can't automatically get a. Administrative review for. That would still require a special use permit. So there are. There are properties that otherwise look like they could have an administrative review uh that would hit certain triggers and have to go before. Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners under a special use permit. Uh, we have other examples there too. Um. If there are, you know, if there are more than, more than one non actively owner occupied property. So you could have an investment property down at the end of the corner. That could get administrative review as soon as the next person comes in, that's when it's triggered and that second person and everyone after that has to go before. Finding Commission, Board of Commissioners, that's a special use permit that and and everything that entails the the staff report, the noticing requirements, neighborhood meetings, all of that. I think, jump to the. A little more about administrative review itself, since this is uh kind of the newer portion of the process that we'd be introducing. Uh, as I keep emphasizing, it really, the the primary focus is on these actively owner occupied properties, people living there while short term renters are. Are also using and enjoying the property. Um, we've identified different building typologies and have. Come up with standards for each of them. Um. Before getting administrative review, I will focus on the single family ones right now because that is the vast, vast majority. Of all short term rentals in the county. Um, as we said here, this one would allow for an owner to occupy either the main residence and have someone, you know. Rent out a couple bedrooms in the main property. They could rent out a bedroom or the. The accessory dwelling unit in the back. You could even have someone live out their accessory dwelling unit and rent the front of the house. Again, there's the idea of self policing and still having someone who's invested in the property onsite to handle issues. Uh, likely they are going to have stricter rules than we would even give under a short term, a special use permit. And so that's uh, that's something that we figured needs. Needs less review from the planning department and from the U G because the the people who are most invested themselves are the ones that are going to be, you know, doing their own policing more or less. Uh, we also address duplexes. Uh, there's just more different combinations that you could have because there's a second unit, especially when you start putting eighty use into the mix. And then multifamily and mixed use buildings. Uh, there really aren't that many, you know, properties that are over. Two units that are being used as short term rounds right now, but we wanted to get them in here. Uh, just make sure that all building types were addressed. Upfront or all residential building types were addressed upfront and to uh create possible incentives in the future for someone to. Uh, you know, take an old dilapidated fourplex, apex, uh, wherever they still exist in the county. Uh, put some effort into it, you know, rehab it and actually live at that property and we would incentivize them by allowing them to. Have some administrative review for several different short term rental units within that property against so long as they're still living there and on the premise. Um, we want to make sure that. All other units. Have a long term rental license attached to it to make sure that we're not depleting the long term rental housing stock. Uh, by incentivizing too many short term rentals, where we try to address that balance there. Um, and again, the the number of short term rounds you can have are higher if you're actively going to be there rather than if you live there. But go, you know, go somewhere for the week because we just still want people on site. And second level, um. Again, I know we, you know, I know everyone here is probably very familiar with how special use permits work, especially with short term rentals. Not a lot of that would change and you just want to hit the highlights that, again, this brings on more uh. A chance for more neighborhood input, more neighborhood notice. Every property owner within two hundred feet of a property that's applying for a short term rental special use permit. Will receive a letter uh and an invitation to attend not only a neighborhood meeting, but then they'll also be granted notice to come to the planning commission. And attend the Board of Commissioner meeting as well. Uh, we would also require that actually for any, any property, um. That needs a lodging establishment license through the state of Kansas Department of Agriculture. So that'd be any property that has four or more. Um, bedrooms or would house eight or more guests would have to not only get the lodging establishment license. But also we'd be required to get a full home inspection from the Department of Ag. Uh, so again, that's another way that we can. We would have uh additional, you know, safety checks and inspections in place and, you know, making sure structural issues aren't there, but it's not putting more of a burden on U G staff to do so. Uh, and as well, there are, uh. Actually, I think this is a good point, probably two to emphasize that when we talk about. The difference between administrative review and special use permits, and we say that you could be a non owner occupied property, could be an investment property, you could be at the corner. Or, you know, somewhere in the middle block. And still getting administrative review if you're the only one of that type. That only applies to single family homes and duplex. So there would never be a situation where someone could come in. Um, buy up an apartment complex and then use that as run Airbnbs out there under an administrative review process. So that that is a distinction we make. There's a lot of different nuances in this code, but we think it's important because we want to make sure that people can use their properties to the best of its abilities. While not having a too much effect of a na- on the neighborhood and not getting in situations like this where all of a sudden. Um, an entire apartment complex becomes half Airbnb's or half short term wells, I should say. I think we can. I think we can. So I've talked a lot at you. I would say we can certainly go back to any other slides or if there's any other questions I can answer, but I do want to hit these three points again as part of the code. We are moving from a short, a special use permit only model to a dual approach with administrative review being the default for owner occupied properties. And then moving into the, the special use permit for basically non-owner occupied or any, any properties that have, you know, problems or higher concentrations or anything like that. Any, any issues that we've, that we've heard from neighbors that have come up again and again, those are placed in as triggers now that move an administrative review back to the, the special use permit model. Whilst hitting this over and over again, but again, this is in, we want to emphasize owner occupied properties and especially actively owner occupied properties. People who are living there, supplementing their income, helping the mortgage by using extra rooms that, you know, the kids went off to college and they haven't downsized yet. Or they, you know, they live in the older part of the neighborhood and still have a accessory dwelling unit above their garage and want to use that for, you know, a local college student nearby. That's what we're emphasizing and that's what we want to make the easiest for people who otherwise would have to go through the special use permit process right now. And then again, to mention sort of this, this carve-out that we, that we use to kind of find a happy medium, I guess. You know, only allowing one non-actively owner occupied property per block under administrative review. Everyone else at that point would have to still go through the special use permit process and with all the noticing reports and votes that come with that. So again, I'll open it up for questions, discussions if we have anyone. Yeah, certainly take any questions that you have.
Okay, questions from the commission members?
Well, I've got some, yeah, but I mean, anybody else have some before I jump in? Commissioner Beth, do you have something?
Charlie's got his hand up.
I'm sorry. I, I know I've got one right next to me too.
My hand up.
Go ahead. I know. I've, I've got you and I've got people here as well. So go ahead, Commissioner Collie will get you out of the way.
I guess on the concentration of, of these units, has it been any complaints or anything? Cause we haven't heard anything about, people complain about Airbnb's.
This is going to enter a plan or design. It depends on where they are, in what neighborhood. But we have seen opposition to special use permits for short-term rentals mainly in Strawberry Hill and in Rosedale. It's hit or miss. Sometimes we get them when places that I would consider Strawberry Hill and they don't get noticed or they don't get community input, but those typically, that's typically where it happens and it usually shows up in the form of general opposition. When asked what the opposition is, we, at our community meetings and at those special use permits, I think people just say they worry that.
Okay. God, I guess I'm asking the question wrong. I mean, have we had any complaints after an Airbnb has been approved? Not doing the opposition of when they trying to get it approved.
Are you, are you asking if they've had to pull their permits?
They don't have to pull a permit. I'm just saying, is there any complaints that we, we received? I haven't heard of any complaints about Airbnb's.
We've had a couple. We've had a couple noise complaints on a few Airbnb's. We've had a couple of, most of the complaints happen where they're doing it without a special use permit though.
Okay. So the people that have gone through the process, we're, we're seeing it, the ones that haven't complied.
Yeah.
Cause you've got 178 advertised on the platforms, but you've only got whatever it is, whatever the number was, 48 or, or whatever that's actually gone through the process.
Correct. And we think by having a dual process that is less burdensome, some for, less burdensome for some that will get greater buy-in of those people who are currently avoiding it because they might not want to go through an SUP process.
I guess my other question is, I mean, I guess some of the concentrated areas, cause I mean, most of the ones that we prove is in one areas, usually in the Rosedale area near KU. And that's because a lot of people come for some type of medical long-term treatment or something like that. And I haven't, just visually watching it and going by those units, I think it has, did something to the community, hadn't taken away.
This is going to hit Dr. Plank. I think staff would agree with you. However, I think it's appropriate to have these conversations now before we reach that tipping point, right? So what is the limit? Staff believes that basically, I mean, the way we see it is if you're living in your house and you have an accessory dwelling unit or granny flat above your garage, you want to rent out a room, there's no reason why you need an SUP and there's no reason why we should get in the way of you doing that other than, you know, meeting the standards and being safe and getting a rental license basically, right? Above and beyond that, the way we've designed the ordinance currently is that you get one per block and anything over that needs an SUP. We see the SUP as both a deterrent and an opportunity to have a broader conversation about sort of neighborhood character at that moment. So SUPs aren't just the thing you need to do to get a short-term rental anymore. It's the thing that gets triggered when there's already a concentration or nearby rental units, right? Short-term rental units. We can have that conversation. We then codify in the code that the sort of, not just those standards, but those discussions about neighborhood characters. So we have, I mean, right now we, short-term rentals not even defined in our ordinance, right? So like, we now have the ability to have a meaningful conversation and plenty of potential reasons to deny it an SUP if we need to. Is that the right approach? I mean, staff does. I think you might hear some comments from public otherwise, but we can have that conversation when those arise.
So my other question is.
You saw the questions?
I do. Yeah, I guess my other question is, has there been any type of case studies? I know New York had a problem with the short-term rentals. Then I don't know how that case finally came up, but it was, they kind of did something with Airbnb's and was trying to stop off Airbnb's. Do you know the results of that?
I don't think we know the specific results of any case law in the state of New York. I would just say we looked far and wide when we did our research for model ordinances and we tried to find many different cities and scales, right? I think for, although we are a smaller jurisdiction municipality, we've, you may have heard me say this before, we have all the transsects, right? Everything from very urban all the way out to very agricultural and everything in between. So it behooves us to look at the different typologies. And that's why I think a huge leap in this ordinance is the fact that we even identify that you could do short-term rentals and houses and duplexes and multifamily and mixed use, right? But not all codes do that. So I think that's a big improvement to where we are. And it also sets us up for longer-term, larger-scale success when I think maybe potentially other issues like a New York situation where they have whole multifamily buildings that are short-term rentals. And that's what the builder operator did. Those are some of the bigger issues where we're not as dit's as a place like New York. So it's not a hundred percent germane when you're talking about the building is your neighborhood, not necessarily the block is your neighborhood. And I think, but we do look at all the typologies because we wanted to recognize that that is a potentiality. We have a couple apartment towers, right? So.
I guess the other question is, I mean, I guess only time we found out was by Airbnb's was mostly, we found them advertising. Is there any other companies besides Airbnb that does short-term rentals?
Oh yeah. There's a company called VRBO. There's, what's the other one? Homestay? Homeaway. There's a, there's a bunch of them. And what's concerning this, and this is not for this case, but what's concerning this more is we're starting to see deep, like sort of variants of that. There's now platforms where you could rent just a pool. There's now platforms where you could rent just somebody's garage for your own storage. There's a whole bunch of that happening, which is other issues and that is less prevalent here. But I think that this ordinance gives us a stronger foundation to then address those variants if and when they become issues here.
All right. Thank you. All right. Commissioner Beth?
Yeah. Do, do we have other cities around here like close that don't have any ordinance, special ordinance for short-term rentals?
Virtually all of them are in the process of working on or amending their current short-term rental ordinances because they're not working.
What about Baser? Do they have a short-term ordinance?
I don't think so.
The city of Oberon Park doesn't even have one.
No.
They're not even doing it.
Process of developing.
And I have a, another question is what are we going to do different with a short-term rental in a neighborhood versus other rental houses? Are we going to limit, limit how, how, how many long-term rental houses we can have on a block?
No, not in this ordinance. We're not.
And why are we treating short-term rentals different?
Because a long-term rental is somebody who lives in that building for a long period of time. You may not own the house, for instance, but you're renting the house, you're a part of that neighborhood. A short-term rental by definition is basically turning a single-family home into a hotel. It's a very different thing than renting your house to a long-term tenant who typically is at a, I mean, even three, but six to 12 months lease.
But they always, always live out the lease though, right? There's, there's no guarantee that, is there, is there an ordinance that means if you rent a house as a long-term rental for 31 days?
We've played cat and mouse with quite a few people who pull listings on and off platforms to avoid being recognized. And those who tweak the numbers where they.
My, my.
29, it's for 31. Now it's 30.
My whole question about this, and, and you guys have done an amazing job. I, I know you've put a lot of work in this and, and I, I spent a good part of my career enforcing ordinances. And I, I know for a fact, the more complicated it is and the more confusing it is, the less compliance. And by the number of short-term rentals that we have advertised versus the number that we have on special use permits is only 30%. And the more complicated this process is, I believe the less compliance you're going to get. And, and I, I don't understand why there can't be a simple license or permit, just as we do with rental licensing. That, that obviously by, by your own admission that people are moving in and buying these short-term rentals or improving the, the rentals, thus improving the neighborhood. And we're not regulating long-term rentals in that neighborhood, which we know, we just saw what happened with some of these houses that are dilapidated, which are long-term rentals by out-of-state landlords that we can't do anything about to get them to fix. A, a, a short-term rental is that big of a problem of, of lack of maintenance? And, and if it is, couldn't that be addressed by a simple rental license? They, they pay a fee and, and if they don't maintain the property, it looks like a short-term rental would be easier to get a bad tenant out in 30 days and reissue another permit than it would be to evict someone that's got a six-month lease that's not taking care of the property.
I think you mentioned two things that I'd like to address. One is the self policing of these platforms or short-term rentals in great, in greater number than slum lords who do long-term rentals, right? So we believe the market to a degree polices itself. If you have a, if you have a terrible manager or a terrible unit, you're not going to get a lot of people coming to your short-term rentals because one, they can see it in their pictures and they're going there to stay at a certain quality. A and B, if there's a low rating on it, people will start asking why. And some people filter out by the number of stars, right? So there's some, it's not perfect, but it's some level of, of, of the, the self-correcting in the market that happens in general. We think that's a good thing, right? Because most people who are investing in single-family homes to turn them into short-term rentals, I mean, yeah, they're gut jobs, but anecdotally in this room, we've seen some of those that have been complete, like remodels because it was an old burnt out house, right? Where nobody would have, would be willing to touch it because you couldn't get a return on investment if it was a long-term rental, but you can if you're short-term rental. The other issue that we're dealing here is we're at that point where we're almost at an inflection point in the real estate market, right? Where it makes sense right now to flip into short-term rentals. Eventually, over time, as property values, values rise, which I think is the goal of generally speaking, depending on who you're asking, when you're asking them. It'll correct itself and those, a lot of the short-term rentals will get to a point where selling them as single-family homes might be easier or better for property owners. They're not investors. They're just not there yet. But we're at the place right now where a lot of people are investing in short-term rentals and only short-term rentals. Cause they can just make so much more money than a long-term rental. And that requires equality. What you're proposing, I think we're doing. While there are a lot of nuances that we've had to written right into this, because there are a lot of different pathways to go for a different short-term rentals. At the end of the day, what this is going to be is somebody comes in to fill out a, a rental application, which will now be for short-term and long-term. If you check the short-term box, you get pushed over to planning, who will review that and determine if it needs an administrative review or a special use permit in the same way that a business who approaches unified government fills out a business license. Every single business license that goes through business license gets to, gets pushed over to planning to check the zoning. And we say, yes, it can go or no, it needs an SUP or whatever, right? So it is as simple as that. That's what we're proposing.
And that looks like another level of bureaucracy to, to kick it down, the short-term rental down to another process. When, when you just made the argument that the short-term rentals are investment properties by people that, that maintain them themselves to keep the value up of the property, because if they don't, they can't rent them and make any money. And when the market for short-term rentals goes away, they're going to sell them maybe to an individual for a, a profit. And you turn that house back to a single-family owned, owned property, which seems to be the argument that the short-term rental should not be any more difficult than, and oppressive than, than having a, a long-term rental license. And also what, what will we do if a guy owns three properties within a block of themselves, because some of our blocks can be pretty big. He gets an administrative license for one, and then what about the other two? If he's a good tenant.
The other two currently, as you described in your hypothetical, would have to get special use permits if they were all in the same block.
So, so he's a good tenant and he gets an administrative license for one, but then he has to go and get a special use permit for two more, which that's, it doesn't make sense to me. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm confused with it. And if I'm confused, these people that are going to have to deal with this process are going to be equally confused.
Typically what we see is even in the areas like, or excuse me, like Rosedale and Strawberry Hill is there's a density, but there's typically not more, even the ones that don't have SUPs that should, typically not more than one per block. So for that and many other reasons, again, the diversity of neighborhood types that we have in the unified government, because there are short-term rentals in Piper as well as Midtown at not just Strawberry Hill and Rosedale community. The concern we hear from the public is they don't want a concentration, right? So they want to understand what the density is in their neighborhood. They're worried about that. And they're worried about that tipping point where it is just people who are coming in on weekends and nobody's actually living there. They're losing their quote neighbors, right? That's the balance that we're trying to strike with short-term rentals and the SUP and the administrative review.
I think.
Typically don't see more than one per block already. So I think by setting the standard now and moving forward, we're directing everybody. If you want to get in the short-term rental business, don't do it more than one per block. And there's thousands of blocks to choose from. So I think honestly, our hope over time is two things. That the, and realtors do this all the time, right? They grow what the neighborhood is. We usually don't get, I'll use an example, we usually don't get feedback on short-term rentals in Strawberry Hill that are west of Sixth Street. I would consider Strawberry Hill up to Seventh Street. Is that their physical boundary? Maybe not. But if you're a real estate agent, you could make that call. And eventually if all the blocks in, in Strawberry Hill, each one has one short-term rental on it, then the market will start to grow out and spread the investment that's occurring outside of these nodes into more areas. And that's a good thing, right? At that one per. I think the second issue that we've mentioned here that I, or we've mentioned on this slide that I want to get back to is because we're prioritizing across this entire proposed codes amendment actively owner occupied, it may not incentivize, we have to wait and see if it does incentivize. But our intent here is that local property owners currently today have an easier job of renting out their backyard than getting an SUP or renting out their, their granny flat. Instead of getting an SUP, they can just pull a permit, get a rental license permit, do a quick administrative review, boom, they're, they can go. We hope that ease brings more people into the fold. So there's less of a difference between what host compliance says we get on a monthly basis and what our actual permits are on a monthly basis. And then secondly, because we address all these different typologies, we hope that local developers get more engaged in this or local. we hope that local developers get more engaged in this or local property owners start to invest, as Mr. Farley mentioned, and they decide, well, why don't I buy that duplex so I can live in one and get an administrative permit to rent out the other? And now I have supplemental income. We're trying to, this is gonna increase, we're gonna have to do lots of outreach, obviously, to keep this thing going. But we're hoping we're directing this thing so that more local people get involved in this opportunity as supplemental income.
We have, how many owner-occupied short-term rentals now?
Like three, I would say, two or three.
Uh, and. Yeah, I, I think part of the problem is people are, just don't care for rental property in their neighborhoods. The, the static neighborhoods, they, they hate to see rental property, period, whether it's short-term or long-term. Uh, and I, I can see where we're not treating the same person right. If one, for one house, he can get an administrative permit and another house, he has to go and get a special use permit. I, I, I don't, I, you know, I, I don't see that, why would one person be treated that way? And, uh, so if one person gets a administrative permit and buy, gets a, uh, uh, short-term rental on one block, he's boxed other investors out.
Well, we're trying to disinvest, we're trying to disincentivize somebody buying multiple properties on a single block to do short-term rentals. Yes, that's what we're trying to disincentivize.
So you're trying to disincentivize people from buying short-term rentals? Is that what you're saying?
We're trying.
More than one on a block, then, then limit rent, limit long-term rentals also, because they're just as bad, if not worse.
I, I think, I think we're picking winners and losers. Um, what type of problems have you seen with the way we've been doing it? I mean, non-compliance is one, but that can be fixed. You guys already know, there's a hundred and seventy-eight, and we've got fifty that are, that are through our process. So, I mean, we're going after those, right? I'm assuming?
To the best of our ability.
And what does that mean, though?
That we're not.
Okay, well, so that's, that's, that's internal. So we're gonna go ahead and change the entire way we're doing something that we may be doing correctly, because we don't have the resources to take care of it maybe the right way. So that bothers me. Um, secondly, I have a problem with picking numbers. You, you pick the numbers on a block, well, if you come out to my street, that's eight homes on my, on one block. So that's one out of eight. You go to Strawberry Hill for a block, that could be forty-six homes. So there are gonna be one short-term rental out of forty-six homes, where in my neighborhood, it could be one out of eight. So I don't like the idea of, you know, looking at it strictly as something like that, because every street, every, everything's gonna be different. I'd rather look at a density number or something like that, or a percentage, um, something like that. Um, you know, the long-term rental situation, I mean, it's pretty easy to get a rental license, other than you, you have the property inspected and you get your short-term, or you get your long-term license, fifty-five dollars a year. They're pretty regular about sending you that, that's pretty much it. People that go through the short-term process go through a lot more hoops, they have a lot more to lose. Uh, you know, the, these houses are typically much nicer than your average rental. Um, you know, let's face it, every person we ever have coming into any, uh, planning commission about any type of project, whether they're a commercial project, a short-term rental or anything, doesn't want something next to their house that's not single-family. Nothing, everybody wants single-family next, next to their properties. Um, and even when you have single-family, you've got renters that move in. We don't ask them to have decibel meters, uh, we don't log how many parties they have, but yet it, it's pretty darn easy to get one. And then the ones that are spending a lot of money to upgrade their properties, and, and we've seen some people come in and take some houses that, you know, would have sold for nothing and, and in these areas and have made them amazing. And i- in terms of the complaint department, the beauty of the special use permit is, is if they're not taking care of it, they're gonna get their permit pulled, they're not gonna be able to do anything with their property other than sell it or move it into a, a long-term rental. I think the way we've been handling, matter of fact, so many people have come to me, it, it, I, I work with government affairs directors for real estate associations across the country. We've been dealing with short-term rentals for years. I don't think Wyandotte County can fix the problem that we can't fix nationally, uh, from a real estate association perspective, uh, in this short amount of time. I, I appreciate the work that's been done, but I think we, we've got a solution that's looking for a problem. And I, we're gonna hear from the public here, here shortly. But, um, again, I think the way we've been doing it, matter of fact, I spoke to, uh, somebody in Topeka about this last week, and they wanted our, our processes. Matter of fact, I was gonna email you to, to get those because they like what we're doing here. This is, this is Wichita, um, the, just for example. But I, I, I don't have any, any inclination or any, um, I'm not prepared to move forward with anything, any type of recommendation at all, based on the, without a, a deeper dive all the way around. So I'm gonna shut up for now. I'm gonna go to, um, hang on just a minute, I'm gonna go to Commissioner Strauss because he hasn't spoke yet.
Yeah, I just, I, I kind of agree with everybody. I just look at the map that you guys show, and it says to me, uh, that there's something deeper going on in our city that we have so many people wanting to rent in certain areas of our city that we need to, we just need to keep an eye on that. I mean, whether it, that has to, I mean, that goes way deeper than this commission. But if we've got that much rental, we obviously know what's right to the east of us and why there's so much rental in that area. And, um, I think that our UG needs to take a look at that before we start putting, not necessarily over-densifying an area with a bunch of short-term rentals, which I, you know, sometimes I believe we do, I know there, you know, that KU area's got a ton of them, which we see on the map and we seem to keep them flowing through here. But if we're not getting complaints from them, they're great tenants and they, they improved the neighborhood, then who am I to say that that's a bad thing? But I think, um, to staff's point, over time, that we gotta put some, and to your point, uh, uh, to our commissioner president, to, to your point, we gotta make sure that we don't over-densify these areas and turn all this into a rental area where, you know, you know, one every block, that could be a lot of houses that, that are rented over there and we don't have actual residents, uh, in those areas. So that's just my, that's my two cents, so.
And I understand, and I'm gonna go to Commissioner Conley before we go to the public. But, you know, I look at these resort areas where the entire resort is typically short-term rentals. And, and, um, so, I mean, there's, there's, there's pros and cons to both. But I'm gonna go to Commissioner Conley and get his, uh, last comment before we go to the public.
Okay, I, I guess I, I found the article about the, uh, New York case. It was in, uh, January the third, a federal judge blocked New York's law, um, that would expand the ability to crack down on Airbnb and short-term rentals. And also in there, it talks about Airbnb and other listing sites. HomeAway challenged the law, and it was a joint lawsuit against the city for violation of Fourth Amendment rights against legal searches, judge. So I'm, I'm just saying that I think we opened it up myself for some type of lawsuit. Uh, and, uh, I like the way that we're doing it now. Um, and as Commissioner Strauss says, I mean, we, we'd see the density, it's in the Rosedale area close to KU, and that's because of the needs of family, the people's getting treatment there. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Conley. I'm gonna go to the public, I'm gonna start off with Rose Iels.
Hi, my name's Rose Iels. I talked a little bit earlier, I live at five oh six North Fourth Street, which is in, on Strawberry Hill. Um, I am on the Strawberry Hill Neighborhood Association Board, but I'm speaking on, on behalf of myself personally tonight. And I just have a couple of things, could you go to that slide, uh, Gunner, that says, uh, dual approach level one? Hmm, I think it's the next page? That one, yeah. So, um, the first column where it says, "Single-family owners' primary residence, find accessory dwelling unit allowed based on owner occupancy, status, and use of primary unit." It's the third bullet point I have a problem with. I, and, and so I just wanna point that out, but let me make some points. Um, I feel like we need to have a complete moratorium on any short-term rental permits of any type on Strawberry Hill and Rosedale. I know they feel the same way, I'm not trying to speak for them. But definitely for Strawberry Hill, Strawberry Hill has a history, has historically been impacted in a very negative way. First, in nineteen fifty-seven, by the demolition of many of our homes for the construction of I-70. And then after that, redlining, which went on for a long time and in many people's mind is, is still going on and, uh, socio-economic. There's also, with regard to this, a change in the ordinance and just the way it's been working before this ordinance and even in trying to develop the second one, there's a real lack of communication with the Spanish-speaking community. We have a very large Spanish-speaking community on Strawberry Hill and the surrounding hills. And whenever something big like this comes up, they're totally neglected. Um, I do feel like there needs to be more outreach to the communities about this kind of thing. Also, and I'll go through this quickly, um, I feel very strongly that there needs to be, uh, an enforcement plan developed and established, a real plan for enforcement of the current policy and future, and a future ordinance. And it should include substantial fines. You know, some of these short-term rentals charge for five hundred dollars a night. Well, if you, if the fine for some kind of, uh, problem that they have is a hundred and fifty dollars, they're gonna laugh all the way to the bank, you know? Needs to be a substantial fine, and it needs to be collectible, which kind of brings me to my next point, which is, I strongly believe if there are gonna be any short-term rentals, they really should all be owner-occupied, if they're in a residential neighborhood. You know, these out-of-town investment companies, they're gonna do whatever they wanna do. And when you try and track them down to find them or have them do something, they're gonna completely ignore you. Um, also, we feel very strongly in Strawberry Hill about keeping our neighborhood, the fabric of our neighborhood intact. Um, a bunch of short-term rentals and even, well, yeah, so there's that point. Also, there's just a huge shortage of affordable housing. And to me, that's, that's a primary thing. If we don't have homes for people to buy or rent at a reasonable rate, and I, I feel like you guys in the commission and planning and, and, uh, everybody's really got their eye on the ball for that, but I feel like this might be something that's gonna knock us off course. Also, speaking just about Strawberry Hill, the parking up here is at an incredible premium. You know, if, if you have one car at a short-term rental, they could probably squeeze in a place. But if it's a two or three-bedroom short-term rental, there could be three, four, five cars. There's just nowhere for those people to park. And if, if my neighbors go to work during the day, they drive to Johnson County or Kansas City, Missouri, they come home, they may not have a place to park. As a board member, I've gotten phone calls from people when, and, and I'm not trying to talk bad about St. John's, but they had the big party for the Croatians being in the, whatever, World Cup. And I had several neighbors call me upset because they had so many people at St. John's, nobody could park in front of their house for three blocks around. That was an unusual incident. But if we have too many short-term rentals, we're gonna have that problem too. And, and I think this'll be my last point. Um, our houses are very close together. We had a short-term rental, you know, our backyards were cornered from each other. And unfortunately, um, the woman that owned the short-term rental lived, I don't know where, Southern Overland Park or something. And she supposedly had a management company running it, we had no contact information for them. And there was a party there every weekend, and at the time, I was still gainfully employed. And it was awfully hard to get up and go to work in the morning when there were people partying right outside my window till two or three in the morning. So it's a very complicated issue, there's lots of nuances. Like an onion, you peel one la- layer, you're gonna get some other kind of problem. So while I think it's wonderful that, you know, the planning, uh, department is trying to come up with a solution, I really feel like it needs to be studied a little more. Um, and I wanted to make one other point, we, we've been, as a neighborhood, we have a little committee where we work on these all the time because we've had such an invasion of these. I mean, we had one woman who came in, bought the house, worked on it. We all, you know, we walk around the neighborhood, we talk to her, she said, "Oh yeah, my husband and I are gonna move in." Well, that was a lie. And they, they didn't get a special use permit, they just started listing it on Airbnb, we found out. They got a code violation, yada, yada.
Mrs. Iels, I don't mean to interrupt you, but you have one minute left.
Oh, that's fine, I'm almost done, it's just my little story. So she went before, you know, she tried to get a special use permit, and we had all said, no. You know, she lied to us, there's not enough room, all the reasons, and it was denied. And the next day, they put a for-sale sign in the front yard and sold it. And now we have a wonderful young couple living up at the end of the block, they're great, they're a lot of fun. And they, uh, have had to redo a lot of the stuff that the previous people did because they said it was done, it was not done in a workman-like manner. So you got that too, part of the onion. So that's my two cents, just to answer one question, there have been a lot of peer-reviewed studies on this kind of thing. The Economic Policy Institute, uh, University of Cologne in Germany has done research on it. Journal of Marketing Study, I mean, there's lots of information out there if you have the time to go look. Thank you.
Thank you for those thoughtful comments, I appreciate, appreciate you being so reasonable also. Um, gonna go to Donna now, please, Donna? Donna?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, um, Donna, my name's Donna Henderson Hoyt, six four two two, Cernitro. Speaking as an individual tonight, um, a lot of what I was gonna say has already been brought up by many of you already. Um, I know this is a situation and a topic that needs to be discussed with all communities, not just Strawberry Hill or Rosedale. Um, in my community, I'd be happy to have short-term rentals, um, versus some of the boarded-up slumlord-run homes here in my community. Um, as, as has been mentioned before, these long-term rentals that are advertised are usually well-kept, clean, updated, inviting, and that says a lot for my community. Um, number two, like I said, bring, it needs to be discussed with all communities. Um, sho- short-term rentals are probably spread out everywhere, not just Rosedale and Strawberry Hill. This is the first time I've actually heard of this being addressed. Um, and the first time I'm actually getting this part to speak on. So definitely more topics need to be addressed and more communities need to be involved before a vote is made tonight. Um, in addition to that, I think it was mentioned how confusing the rules are. Um, it is chaotic. And I've already mentioned and brought up with our commissioners in an, an email earlier this month about the disconnect between, um, departments already in the UG that need to be.
Did we lose you? Yep, she's gone. Sorry about that, anyone else? Okay, we will close the public portion, we'll go back to the commission, any, any closing comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Armstrong? Go ahead, Commissioner Armstrong.
Um, no, just after hearing everything, correct me if I'm wrong. So if there is more than one on the block, it doesn't mean that there's not, can't be any others, but instead of having the administrative process, it would instead have to do an SUP and then come before us to then be approved.
That's correct, as proposed.
Okay, so, but it's not gonna stop other ones from coming in. They'll just have to go through the lengthy process. We could still approve it and still allow more on the one block?
Yes, from other, to address your point, maybe a little more detail, we have received some comments from Rosedale and Strawberry Hill that want it to be more stringent than that. But the way we wrote it, going through the SUP process is the deterrent as well as potentially the limit. Not because we make SUP processes harder necessarily, but the fact that they have to go through all that to get it A and B, that that requires a public noticing where any opposition could show up and C, how would that? We're trying to build in those standards in the code that don't exist today. There's literally not even a definition of short-term rental in the code today that we don't think would give more grounds for denials in future.
So, and then that gives me, sorry, I have a follow-up question on that then. With the administrative process, is there any type of notification that happens to the people in the community? Like if they're, like, let's say there's a block that has none and this short-term rental comes in, does the administrative review process, does the neighborhood get notified at all that that is now a short-term rental? Or is it just the admin process?
Currently, as proposed, there is no public notice for an administrative review. That doesn't mean there couldn't be one. If we wanted to go down that road, I would not recommend that it's the same as the SUP. But they could, you know, we have people who get land entitlements post neighborhood signs for thirty days. We could make them post a neighborhood sign for thirty days, their first thirty days after getting approval from an administrative review. We could just make them send out a letter to people within two hundred feet notifying them. But I think there's a limit there, right? Because if we give public input into the process as opposed to just notification, it's no longer an administrative process.
So what are you looking for? I'm sorry, Commissioner Beth, go ahead. What are you looking for us tonight? Are you looking for a recommendation to, to approve this? Or are you looking for us to send it back?
The sense that you all don't feel it's ready for approval. Staff feels that it's ready for approval. If we're gonna send us back, we would, we would like to understand what direction you want us to go in so we can write it as such. At the very least, if we don't like the administrative review process at all, at the very least, we need to codify the SUP process that we currently do. We need to update the definitions. We need to make these things accessory uses in some cases. And then we can just set the standards in our SUP ordinance for SUP specific to short-term rentals. So that's at the base level what we think needs to happen, but we think.
Is the, is the end of codifying those, what you, what you want from us tonight or is this something that we after we've, now we've kind of gotten the creative juices flowing that we can email staff and let you know what we're thinking? Because I'm, I'm not prepared to give you a, a, a all-inclusive list tonight of things that I see that are wrong with this or that need to be considered. Especially when I haven't been able to do it with my colleagues in the last five, six, seven years.
Right.
So, that's kind of where I'm at.
Well, I'm, again, I did hear some conflicting comments from the commission, so I think we maybe, if we could maybe spend a little bit of time to hash out what direction you want us to go in so that we can come back with a revised ordinance. I get it. When you read these ordinances, they're written in legalese and they're very hard to read, but that's why we write them in legalese so that they're very clear and certain and there are exact pathways for each scenario, right? That's
Patrick, can you, can you weigh in on this? I know Commissioner Strauss had some concerns about, or maybe it was Commissioner Connolly, I'm not sure who said it. It was one of our online commissioners, said something about basically outlawing them or, I mean, we can as a community, we can decide what we want and what we don't, correct?
I'd be happy to look at that case. You know, that's, it's a different circuit than we are and here in the Tenth Circuit, but I'd be happy to look at it to see if there's any similarities. The last time I did a review of the case law, there were, I mean, of the cities, there were cities that banned it completely. There were cities that had no regulations and cities in between. And I had not seen any Kansas case law specifically saying that, you know, a city could not regulate it. I'm sure as this develops, there will be challenges, courts will look at it, but there's not much right now in Kansas.
Go ahead, Commissioner Beth. Yeah, I, just my opinion, I, I like the administrative process review better than than the special use permit even. But, but I think it's confusing when you try to mold both of them together. And one of my biggest concerns that, that probably needs to be addressed is, is when, when the lady made the comment of, of a moratorium on special use or short-term rentals in Strawberry Hill. Well, if you play the devil's advocate in another area and you limit short-term rentals and say a blighted neighborhood that has a bunch of vacant houses and somebody wants to come in here and buy a bunch of houses and fix them up and renovate them and make them a short-term rental and you have a moratorium and say, no, you can't do that. That's too many. Is that not a form of redlining when you're, when we're picking winners and losers here?
I think considering the rate of compliance with our existing SUP process for short-term rentals, that a moratorium wouldn't do anything but drive people out of the system. They'll just start short-term rentals and not get approvals. Because they know they can and have in the past. So again, I think we wanted to do administrative stuff for one primary reason, which is make it easier for those people who either don't want to go through the SUP process to do some sort of short-term rentals to get supplemental income, A, but B, all those people who currently don't operate short-term rentals and don't, that make it easier for them to come into the fold.
I mean, if you already know who those hundred and so, so, some odd properties are, why can't you just issue a cease and desist immediately?
Namely, because we don't even have the manpower to it's just a, it's just a capacity issue.
And that's, that's the
We have to fight between
That's the thing about making the process simpler to get more compliance, because these are also these hundred and fifty-some or whatever out there are also people that are, are not paying for a license or, or generating any thing for us. And they're not, they're not part of the process. So, so are they operating on a rental license even or are they just?
They're just doing it.
Just doing it. So we have no, no insight of who they are, no, no contact information. We don't, don't know anything about them. Wouldn't, if it was simplified and more compliance and you could bring these in and say, look, it's a simple process. You don't have to jump through hoops. You know, you notify the neighbors. Whenever you come in, we pay your administrative fee, we'll check. And then if you have a problem, we're gonna take it away from you. Then you know who they are, then you can go after them. But if you wouldn't even know who these people are that aren't being compliant, there's no way to enforce anything on them.
I mean, we have general contact information. Again, we don't know if most of these people are owner-occupied or not. We haven't dove into the detail that much. We do know that it changes monthly, but not too much. But it does change monthly. So to draw a stake in the, the line in the sand and have that change on a monthly basis is problematic in an enforcement effort. I think more than anything, we were hoping we could define what the path forward is and then let's say we approve this ordinance, whatever it ends up being. The next step for us would be to go to that list, identify the people who don't have SUPs and send them the information about the new ordinance. And what we were hoping it would be, would be a note that says, hey, super easy for you guys to get an approval now. All you have to do is administrative review. Here it is. Or and if you don't comply with that, you know, you might have to still get an SUP. So we would start some enforcement effort, effort once we knew what our path forward was. That's one of the reasons we've been holding back on that. But the unfortunate truth is that it's also a manpower issue. I have sixty notices of violation that I have to write and I couldn't write them for the last six months because I, my platform wasn't working and I couldn't get my zoning enforcement officers to even generate notice of violation letter. So I'm now catching up from a year ago and now four months of not even having our systems in place to do it. These are all bad excuses. They're not excuses I like to air publicly, but quite frankly, we have two people now who are doing this work and they have three or four zoning enforcement cases that come in on a weekly basis from commissioners. Because they're squeaky wheels, those get priority. I don't want them to get priority.
Right.
That's not fair that they get priority, but they're also the people who are nagging me about getting some determination on what to get done. It's a imperfect system.
I, I agree. And I think that making it simpler, I, I, I think you might be fooling yourself a bit by thinking that by making it simpler, they're all gonna line up. You know the reason I get car tags every year? Because I have to. It's the law and I get penalized if I don't. If you made it easier for me to get my car tags, but I didn't have, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, they made it easier to, to mail your tags in and everything, but you know the reason people get tags for their car? Because they have to. And if I don't, I get tickets. I get penalized. And that's the thing. And if, if I knew, if I didn't think I was gonna get stopped or there wasn't enough manpower out in the police force to stop me, I'm probably gonna try to get away with it until I do. And that's what's going on. They're gonna get away with it as long as they can. So I, I think by saying, rolling out the red cards, they look how easy we're gonna make it. You're gonna pick up a few. You're not gonna pick up your hundred and forty something that are out there. You're not gonna get anywhere near that number. If you, if I saw ten percent come into compliance as a result of an easier path forward, I think that would be a huge win, but I think that's overinflating the expectation. And I, and I, you know me, Gunner, I'm a go-along and I, well, I'm not a go-along-get-along guy, but I, I really think that I don't see anything, I don't see much that I like other than the definitions and narrowing things down. I, I don't think this is at all going to approach what, what we need. And unfortunately, you have illustrated the problem that you have and, and granted, you didn't want to bring it up in public, but it's probably where it needs to be heard. It's, it's what the citizens need to hear, is that you don't have the resources and the tools to be, to adequately run the department that we have. And the mayor needs to hear it. The commissioners need to hear it. But I don't know what good it's gonna do because there's not money to do it. And so, you know, un- until we have the money to make the rule-breakers follow the rules, I guess they get to break the rules. And unfortunately, the people that do it the right way and go get their car tagged and get their short-term rentals license, you know, we're, we're the ones that fall in line and, and get aligned and do what we're supposed to do. But there's always gonna be people that are gonna try to just skirt the rules. I just don't think this does it. And I know that's not the feedback that you want. I'm not prepared to give you much more feedback than what I've given you tonight because I don't think you can go back and fix it in thirty days and come back to me with something I'm gonna like in thirty days. I, I just don't.
Got the question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Ward. You, we have not heard from you. And I'm sorry, Commissioner Strauss, you are on my list.
So I just, do we have the same, and I don't know. I mean, I, I own a rental house here in Kansas, Kansas. It's a long-term rental, obviously. I have a great renter. And that's not always the case, I assume, with, with everybody, but do we have, what is, what is the rate where there's a long-term rental house that hasn't been registered and you guys go after them? What is that rate? What does that look like compared to?
That's not even yours, is it? That would, that would be rental licensing and
Yeah, we don't, we don't manage rental license. We've been working closely with all the agencies relevant to this business license, rental license and the Neighborhood Resource Center and Code Enforcement on, on the drafting of the ordinance. So we haven't done all the CFO and others who collect the taxes. So we haven't doing a lot of internal coordination on how to administer whatever ends up coming here. To your answer, there is really no, as, as far as I know, there are no
The only way you're gonna find that out is if you do a utility study to find out that the utilities are in the name of the person that lives there and you don't, there's no way that they have the time and, and the resources.
Yeah, the closest thing we have is whatever the American Community Survey says is owner, owner versus non-owner occupied units.
I just wondered.
That's probably our best available.
Yeah, I just wondered. I mean, I, obviously we know we have a problem with short-term rentals and I'm like, well,
there are hundreds more long-term rentals out there that are not being licensed at fifty-five dollars a year and being inspected.
I just wondered. I wasn't, I wasn't sure.
That's, that's ten times the number, I'll bet you.
Easy, easy. And short-term rental license division also received staff cuts and so they no longer do annual inspections.
Yeah, I, I, I know people that had said their rental hasn't been inspected since the first time.
Only if there's an issue called to it and only if it's new construction.
Correct.
So these issues go deep. If we care about the development process in our community, we should be investing in our development staff in this unified government, which we have not done for a long time.
Well, I don't see a checkbook up here. Let me check the drawer. The mayor didn't leave it for me because I would write you one. I, I'm sorry. Does anybody have anything else, any, any good information to give Gunner to go back and and to Mr. Farley to, I'm sorry, Commissioner Strauss?
My last point of the night is this, on this particular issue, I think we're trying to tackle a national issue in a local situation where we've got companies that can operate in our city virtually and we really don't have a checks and balances with those particular companies. And I think it's a, it's a greater issue of compliance and, and reporting that I don't know if you guys have the ability to get data, because technically they're operating a business in our city from these particular national corporations, internet corporations, VRBOs. I mean, if, if you want to start with basic compliance letters, it's figuring out who's listing their properties. And I know that sounds like a, a mountain to climb that aren't currently in our current system of short-term rentals. And I'd like to see that versus something like this, if we can figure out who's not in compliance from a national perspective, from these companies. Because you're, you've tapped into something that people are operating businesses in your town and you have no idea and they're backed by national companies. So there should be some sort of a record of who's listing their properties and how we can check that against our records. So that's my last comment for the day.
Thank you, Commissioner Strauss. Commissioner Connolly, you can wrap us up.
Sure. Hey, well, I, I mean, I, I recommend to the chair that maybe we should maybe put a committee together and have some type of community input. And then we can come up with some, I guess, some key factors to kind of write up something for what we really need. We have a lot of input to outside people from Rosedale area and I forgot what other lady was from. And then we had some, a lot of comments by different commissioners. I, I just think a committee would be nice and maybe some public hearings. I don't know. It's up to you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Connolly.
Mr. Chair, my man.
Yes, of course.
The reality is we're about to enter a process where we're gonna be managing about four or five long-range planning processes for the rest of this year. It's gonna include Mr. Farley's time, not as zoning, not as a ordinance study section, but just as a planner, help, all hands on deck kind of issue. I believe strongly that we've done, you've heard me say, we can never do enough community engagement. That will always be true. We've done a lot of community engagement on this. We went to Administrative Human Services last month. They ordered us to do more engagement. We did. We definitely haven't done anywhere near what we need to do in Spanish to Ms. Iles' point, and we can work on that. I think adding another committee to look at this, quite frankly, is untenable by staff. We're managing so much right now that we're not gonna be, I'm just worried that adding one more committee for us to review on such specific issue is gonna, is gonna belabor this to the point where
What's so
We're not gonna make progress.
What's so pressing that we have to fix it now? I mean, we've been doing short-term, we've been doing special use permits on this for what now? Couple of years?
Couple of years.
I mean, Have we reached a point where we just can't continue to do that anymore? I mean, we're, we're getting people now back for their second and, and third renewal that have been complying and following the rules and everything else. I mean, worst-case scenario, we, we, we continue at that one forty-eight and then we just watch it and we say, we're not gonna go above whatever it is that's still out there.
My recommendation based on the conversation tonight would be to focus on improving the code to reflect what we do now. The definitions that aren't in there now need to be there. All the standards for a special use permit that aren't in there that we've just been sort of doing as staff need to be codified.
Are you talking about streamlining the process?
I'm talking about codifying what we do today.
Okay. Okay.
Um, and have it just be SUPs moving forward. If we don't wanna move, if we feel like an administrative review process is gonna be either too much or not getting to the actual core issue. In that sense, it would be two things. Focus on just codifying how we do it and improving that process that we have today. And then we can use that as a foundation that we look at potentially coming in with administrative reviews later on. The neighborhoods that we've talked to and the neighborhoods that have showed up this evening will always say we need to have, not necessarily a moratorium, but we'll have some limit that we need to get to. That is certainly a conversation that probably, if we wanted to dive into it, would require a committee. I just don't think we have the bandwidth of staff to do that committee right now or for the next few months, considering everything else that's going on. The reason we wanted to address short-term rentals is because we had other code changes we wanted to do related to housing. But we felt we had to address this growing crescendo of concern, particularly in these two neighborhoods before we could gain the trust of the general public to move on to those other, um, ordinance amendments. The next one we were gonna look at was to update the parking ordinance because that's a huge cost to housing. So that we thought was an important one. After that, we wanted to pull out, if you remember when we were updating the zoning code three years ago and then stopped. That code had gotten to a point where it actually created a, um, tiny house village ordinance. We were gonna pull that out and move that forward. But we didn't want to do those more substantive changes until we addressed the issue that people were telling us today needed to be addressed, which is short-term rental. So it was kind of a.
I, I, I guess Gunner, I mean, you keep saying people saying that. I mean, I, I mean, we haven't heard that as a, as a board. And I mean, we don't need staff to be on our committee. We can send the notes and the recommendations to you. I just think that this is, I mean, um, this is just such a thing that we, we want to be corrected on. Uh, we, I mean, we made some decisions with what we called the dollar stores and we found out that we did that wrong. And so I'm just saying, we should, I think we should take the time and try to do it right and make everything inclusive. So when we come to vote on it, we have an input that we feel that is equally, uh, fitting for all communities. Now, you mentioned Strawberry Hill and you mentioned Rosedale, but did you mention the Quandary or Piper area? No. So I mean, it's, it's, it's been some inputs from, uh, particular areas and not from all. And I just think that's, that's unfair.
We've done outreach outside of those neighborhoods. Those keep coming up because those are the areas we get the most opposition to this topic. We've been to liberal neighborhoods a couple of times. We've done county-wide outreach. I, I can never do enough. So I'm not gonna say we can't do more.
Right. I, I'm, I'm.
I mean, I agree with what you're saying, but I'm saying we, we've had people, uh, in the Piper area that has done Airbnb. Um, and so, uh, and I'm talking about nice houses. So I mean, it's not just, so I'm just saying, I think it should be some type of input. And it, maybe we don't have to have a community meeting, but I think it is something that this committee and, um, should do. Because when they first started the Airbnb, we had questions and we never put anything to paper. It was always, this is what we done before. This is what we done before.
I think that's, I think that's what Gunner's saying is that we need to codify what we've been doing. And I think that's probably a step in the right direction, at least for now, um, is to put some sort of, because again, we, every, everyone seems to be somewhat different based on what we've done on, on previous ones and that kind of thing. Maybe we need to, like you said, codify that process so we can move forward with some sort of definitions and rules. I, I think the rules honestly keep us safe. I think anytime you streamline it, uh, I think the process that we have, I think it holds people accountable. And if, if it's, if they're not held accountable, they're gonna, they're gonna bend every rule. And if they have, you know, you, you hold this permit over the top of their head that can be removed at any time when they're not making sure that their tenants are doing what they need to do. And those platforms, by way of reviews of the people that rent the houses and things like that. You know, that, that's what, that's what keeps them in business, doing what they wanna do. And so, you know, I just think, I think the rules keep us safe and I think it helps keep the neighborhood safe, um, as well. So, um, I, I wanna kind of wrap that up because, uh, I don't know that we're, we're just kicking the can around the room and the security officer needs to go home and we all need to go home, but.
Could I just make one more comment?
Yes.
Could we also look a little deeper into, um, Commissioner Beth's comment? Which is the whole idea that you have to do, you can do administrative if you're the first and everything else is an SUP is one thing. Could we maybe clear the how, clear the deck on that, but still allow for an administrative review? Which would be a new thing if you are actively owner occupied. If you owned a house and you wanted to.
You're living there.
And you're living there and you wanted to rent out either your granny flat above your garage.
So like, so like Judge Lynch, that's the one that comes to mind. There's, that's one of the two.
The two or three that we have, I don't feel like should be coming in for SUPs. Of them, but it's, I think there would be more of them if people realize it only took a rental license, basically.
I think we should treat, we should treat all of them the same. Because I mean, we don't know if they actually live there. They just saying that they do.
Well, I think there has to be some sort of rules and, and checks and things like that to, to prove that. And the first time we do, it's pulled and there's some sanctions. Whoever made up the rule or whoever made the comment that uh, maybe it was the member of the public that, you know, you find somebody a hundred and fifty bucks and they're bringing in four fifty a night, they're gonna pay the fine all day long. I have that in my own, my, my own business. Uh, but it's, it's gotta escalate. It's gotta have some teeth. And otherwise you take their ability, their livelihood away from them. So you know what? They'll find a way to make it work and they'll, they'll follow the rule. But I think that's something, at least, I think that's something I can live with. I mean, I know I disagree with Commissioner Connolly. But I, that's something I think I could live with if there were rules in place to provide that, you know, to make sure that they were truly owner occupied. And the, the, I know at least the one that I, that I can recall by name, they live in the house and, uh, and that's easy enough to do. But, you know, anytime you start opening it up, people will find a way around it, of course. But you know, there's utility records, there's all kinds of things to, to figure it out.
I think we could, if it's okay to, I, I, I understand Commissioner Connolly's comment. I think we can, what I'd like to do is go back, think about fines a little bit more. Think more about how to just codify the SUP process today that we basically do from procedure or protocol. Um, and then I think we'll do a small carve-out for your consideration if you want to allow administrative review only. But outside of that one small carve-out, um, if we wanna keep it a level playing field for all folks, then, then, then we can do that and come back to you. I think what it will, what this will not address is a density calculation of any, of some kind, which I think gets really complicated really fast, which is why we wanted to be just like, one a block. That's it. Um, it's as simple as that. Um, so if we remove that from it and take the complexity about what is or isn't administrative on a block and what reasons why, I think that should streamline or it should clarify and simplify it a little bit. But we will still have that question from the public, I guarantee it, about what is the density calculation? And I think our response could be, if we standardize and codify what those standards are, it gives us greater grounds to deny cases if we do feel like there is a density issue on a case-by-case basis. So I think we can add language like that to help it, to help, as opposed to saying we don't like it because of neighborhood opposition.
I still have a problem with the density issue because I still think you're picking winners and losers.
Uh, that's why I say we, I, I think it'll keep coming up from the public, but we will write it as not, as so that there is.
Just looking at it from a legal standpoint, um, we face more legal exposure not having it codified because we can deny on random levels. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think whenever you are just exercising pure discretion, it, you know, brings into question the reasonableness.
So like codifying it is at least, like at least codifying what we do now is more of a CYA that we need to do right now than.
Right.
And getting into maybe the administrative review and streamlining it later.
Right.
I'm done.
You're done?
If you are.
Done. Anybody else got anything before we close?
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it.
Thank you all. This meeting is adjourned. Sorry.
Did you vote on that?
Oh, do we have to vote on that?
No, I guess you don't.
I can end this meeting if I want, can't I?
We've been doing that at full commission meetings now.
You've been doing a lot of things at full commission. I'm sorry. You, you wanna go down that path, Counselor?
No, sir, we don't.
Are we still recording?
Yes, we are.
I call this meeting adjourned unless I see any objections or hear any objections. I hear none. This meeting is adjourned.